Good evening, everyone. This is Shannon Rutherford, the Town Planner for the Town of Farmington for tonight's Town Plan and Zoning Commission meeting. I will start with a roll call of our commission members and then turn it over to our chair. So at the top, we've got Patrick Carrier.
Yeah, here.
Mike Grabulis.
Here.
Scott Halsted.
Here.
Matt Wagner.
Here.
Liz Sanford.
Here.
Ina St. James.
Here.
Mike Walsh.
Here.
James Rockcliffe.
Here.
All right, okay, and Matt Bandel.
Here.
Okay.
All right.
All yours yesterday.
Again, welcome. This is Ina St. James. Welcome to Town of Farmington Town Plan and Zoning Commission Meeting. Today is Monday, January ninth, and we have a full agenda. Let's begin, seven oh one. Scott, if you can read the call, please. I would appreciate it.
Absolutely. Town of Farmington Town Plan and Zoning Commission. Notice is hereby given that the Town Plan and Zoning Commission will hold an online public hearing Monday, January nine, two thousand and twenty-three at seven o'clock P. M. on the following applications. Michael Serena, application for waiver for the sale of alcohol, beer and wine for property located at ten twenty-four Farmington Avenue. Andrew and Ashley Kidd, application for change of zone from C. One to R. Twenty to construct single-family residence for lot eighty-seven forty-five River Road. Mot Corporation, application for special permit and site plan approval for chains of change of use to manufacturing for a portion of existing building located at sixteen ninety New Britain Avenue, C. One Zone. CPD Parent Properties LLC, application for change of zone from B. R. B. One to B. One, special permit and site plan approval for gas station with convenience store, quick service restaurant, bank branch with drive-through and office building for property located at three four two Colt Highway. Town of Farmington Plan and Zoning Commission, application for amendment to the zoning regulations to add Article One, Section Five, A, multi-family residential housing moratorium. Town of Farmington Plan and Zoning Commission, application for amendment to the zoning regulations to add Article One, Section Five, B, single-family residential more housing moratorium. Interested parties are encouraged to participate in this online public hearing. The link to this meeting can be found on the Town of Farmington's website at the address on your screen. A copy of this proposal is online at the address on your screen as well, or by calling the planning department at Farmington Town Hall at eight six zero six seven five two three two five, dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this twenty-second day of December two thousand and twenty-two. Town Plan and Zoning Commission, Ina St. James Chair.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may, I do want to make an announcement for anyone that has called in from the public. We do need to make an announcement that the application for CPD Parent Properties at three forty-two Colt Highway has been withdrawn, and this matter will not be heard this evening. We'll make that announcement a few times in case somebody calls in late. But this application will not be heard at three four two Colt Highway. That application has been withdrawn and will not be discussed at all this evening.
Thank you, Shannon. Thank you, Scott. Nice job. Let's go through our new business items. This portion of the meeting is non-public hearing, so we will not be accepting any public comments. The first item under new business is a sign application from Tom Kucheski for properties located at two forty-four through two forty-eight Main Street. And who do we have?
All right, Thomas, you're on the line, I believe.
Yes, I'm here.
Perfect. So we've got your site plan, and then I've got the sketches. If you could explain to the commission a little bit about what you would like to do for the properties at two forty-four and two forty-eight, that would be helpful, please.
And this is Farmington, not Unionville, right?
Correct. Two forty-four, two forty-eight Main Street in Farmington.
Thank you.
Is basically the location of the sign is going to be as same as two forty, the same dimension, width and height, we're just basically going to copy and paste the same thing on two forty-four and two forty-eight.
Well, thank you.
Okay, and Thomas, will there be lighting?
Yes, yes, exactly. The same order is on two forty when you're looking right now in the picture. It's going to be light on the grass on both sides to just light up during the night.
Okay, and it will have the columns, the street number will be on the post, and it'll be a flat finial at the top.
Yes, yes. And I will try maybe install something on the top as a sign of the building because the one on the post, no one can see basically. It's too small.
Okay.
Just.
It might be something more similar to the sketch that was originally.
Exactly correct. Exactly correct.
Okay.
Very similar to the sketch and, you know, of all of three of them. Because the one we tried, you know, install on the post, but you can't see much.
Okay, and if you could, the total height won't it won't exceed six feet, and the total panel for signage won't exceed the twenty-five square feet, correct?
Exactly correct. Exactly the same order is on two forty.
Okay, that's what we have. Okay. All right, Commissioners, let's turn it over to you for comments and questions. Patrick, you go first, please.
Yeah, so so basically, we're just that that sign that we just saw that was at two forty, and we're going to do the same, almost the same thing at two forty-four and two forty-eight, pretty much, right?
Yes, exactly correct.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, no questions.
Thank you. Mike? Grabulis?
Mike Grabulis, are you there?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Scott?
No questions for me either. Thank you.
All right, and Matt H?
No questions. Thank you.
You got it, Liz?
No questions. Thank you.
All right, Mike Walsh?
No questions.
All right, and James?
No questions.
And Matt B?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Okay. For a second, I thought I heard three. So definitely two signs?
It's two signs.
Okay, all right, then.
Yeah, the one at two forty already exists.
Okay, so maybe.
Okay, the two forty-four and two forty-eight will replicate what's there.
Okay, so applicant will work with town staff, make sure it fits the size.
Oh, yes, because there'll be a building permit that comes in. So we'll make sure at the time of building permit that it matches.
All right, perfect. That works for me, too. I have no new questions. Commissioners, before we vote on this matter, any last minute questions? We're good? Okay. I need a motion and a second, please, to approve this application.
Yeah, Patrick Carrier, I'd like to make a motion to approve the sign application by CompuSigns LLC at two forty-four and two forty.
Sorry, hang on, Patrick. I'm sorry. You've got the let me pop up the. Yeah, we updated the agenda on you. So here it is up on the screen for you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, yeah, so Patrick here, I'd like to make a motion to approve the sign application by Tom Kuretzky.
Kuretzky.
Kuretzky, sorry, for two forty-four and two forty-eight Main Street as presented.
Second?
Scott Halsted, I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, Thomas, you're all set. Thank you for calling in.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Bye.
All right, moving right along. The next application is from Tractor Supply Company for a property located at three six one Scott Swamp Road, and we're looking at a site plan approval for a greenhouse addition. And this one has been around for a while, right, over the years, I think?
Well, it's the Tractor Supply, obviously, has been there for quite some time. And then, yes, we were back and forth with them with modifications.
Okay.
So the plan before us is the modified, and I'm not sure who at Tractor Supply is taking the lead. I don't see Aaron Blue on the line, but I think there's a few other.
This is Colleen Kearney one with Onyx creative.
Perfect. Okay, Colleen, you're up.
Okay, so there's an existing Tractor Supply store, and then we're going to we're looking to add the Green House Garden Center into the existing fenced-in area. No new impervious being added. There's going to be, well, there so there currently is some online pickup in the parking, and we're looking to move that into this into the drive-through space through the fenced-in area. So there's some a few signs that go along with that that circulation.
Which way are.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
What is. Like, which way people are pulling in and all that? Is there going to be?
So the traffic, Colleen, correct me if I'm wrong, the the gate is the existing gate is here, and the traffic flow would be from the front of the building through this fenced area to do the online pickups and then through and exiting out to the rear.
Correct.
And then I believe we agreed circulation would be counterclockwise around the building, if I recall.
Yes.
Okay, and then the greenhouse is limited to this white shaded space on this as we're looking at this plan?
Yes.
Okay, and I think there were photos. The photos have been shared. So this is another project, similar project in another location. So we had greenhouse and the pickup. These extra canopies are not part of the project that's here in the in the northeast. So so this is that is this a accurate reflection of what those canopies and the the greenhouse enclosure will look like, Colleen?
Yes, polycarbonate and roll-up windows.
All right. Okay. Do you have anything else to share for the application?
No.
Okay, short and sweet. Right. No one else, right, from Tractor Supply?
And no one else that that was on for calling in has anything to offer at this point? Is that correct?
Correct. This is me.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, Commissioners, let's go through our questions. Excuse me, Patrick. Questions for the applicant?
Um, I mean, I read through the everything was pretty thorough, and I see all the. There was a response to the to all the, I guess, questions that from the plan review or the plan review comments. No, I really don't. There's going to be, I mean, so you do realize that signage you have to come back before TPZ for signage?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, okay. No, other than that, I don't. I don't have any questions. Like I said, it was pretty thorough, and I know this has been around for a while, at least the idea something about nineteen eighty-six or something. So I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Mike?
No questions. Thank you.
All right, Scott?
Yeah, no questions for me either. Thanks.
How about you, Matt? Matt H?
Yeah, thanks. No, no questions for me. Thank you.
All right, Liz?
Just one clarifying question. The picture showed two peaks of the polycarbonate, but it looks like the plan is only one, which is it one or is it two?
This one's going to be two.
Okay, so it's going to be the two peaks, and then are you requesting the pickup sign alleyway also?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just I just want to clarify my concept. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Mike Walsh?
No questions.
Thank you. James?
No questions either.
And Matt Bandel?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
All right, so Shannon, you do see two?
Excuse me?
Two peaks are here.
Yeah, so this is what you're looking at is here's the so this is the bottom of one, the peak, the bottom, the middle between the two, the second peak, and then the bottom edge.
Got it. Okay.
So you do have so the peaks are there, and then this is the center, the canopy, but the canopy for the pickup is a smaller. It only comes back. Is it twelve feet, Colleen, from the face?
Yes, twelve feet.
And the hours are the same as the store?
Yes.
And so like, help me with the sizing. So like, is it pickup truck or something bigger? Who who pulls through this area?
It would be. Sorry, go ahead.
Just regular customer cars.
Okay, then as far as turning left in the back, we have plenty of room?
Ah, yes. Yes, we were just the staff was concerned about the two-way circulation. I think at one point it was perhaps intended for two-way, but a lot of the drive aisles won't accommodate technically two-way travel.
Yeah.
It probably hasn't been an issue in the past because, other than employees parking back here, any customers are parking up front, and it probably wasn't an issue. But if we're going to be having customers come to the back, we want to have a clear traffic pattern around since it'll be tight for two-way traffic, particularly if you have like two pickup trucks or something trying to get by.
Yeah.
So.
And then we have buffers in the back?
They're already established. So there was the buffers. They're not changing the pavement area at the rear. So none of that changes, and all that they buffer distance to the rear stays the same.
Okay, thank you. I don't have anything else. I just needed to put it in my brain somehow. But thank you.
Sure.
All right, Commissioners, any last minute questions before we take a vote on this application?
Hey, and that's a quick one for me. So I see five accessible parking spaces. Just to confirm those will stay as is?
Yes, those are existing to remain.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Good question. All right, so sounds like we're ready to vote. We need a motion and a second, please.
Oh, yeah, Patrick here. I'd like to make a motion to approve the the site plan by Tractor Supply Company at three sixty-one Scott Swamp Road for a greenhouse addition.
Second?
Liz Sanford, I second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No pose? Abstentions? Okay, it's unanimous.
Okay, thank you, Colleen. We'll follow up with a letter to to you folks. Okay?
All right. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, moving right along. The next new business item is an application from Rainco Incorporated. It's a for property located at sixty-two Spring Lane. It's a site plan approval for a garage addition.
Yes, and they have submitted a letter requesting an extension to the February thirteenth meeting.
Okay, so we need to make a motion to move it or?
Sure, we can have a motion to continue to the February thirteen.
So motion and a second to continue, please, February thirteen.
Oh, yeah, I'd like to make a motion to continue. Do I have to read through the whole thing, or?
No, that's you can just say the Rainco.
Okay, yes, I'd like to make a motion to continue the the Rainco Inc. application. I'd like to continue to February thirteen, two thousand and twenty-three meeting.
Second?
Liz Sanford, I second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, item has been moved. And then the last new business item is in we're accepting an application from Michael Reiner for property located at seventeen Telkot Knatch Road. It's an application for special permit for food court and and schedule public hearing with a recommended date of February thirteen, two thousand and twenty-three. We need a motion and a second, please.
Oh, yeah, Patrick here. I'd like to make a motion to accept the application by Michael Reiner for seventeen Telkot Knatch Road for special permit for food court and schedule a public hearing with recommended recommended hearing date of February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
All in favor? Oh, second, please. Sorry.
Liz Sanford, I second.
Thank you. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, we're good. Thank you. I didn't mean to rush us all along, but good job, Commissioners, for staying on track. All right, Shannon, before we do the public hearing, maybe we should see if someone is.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. We'll make a notice announcement one more time. So just an announcement for anyone that's called in for the public, the hearing. Item number four on the agenda tonight for CPD Parent Properties at three forty-two Colt Highway is the application has been withdrawn, and there will be no discussion regarding this matter tonight. So if you've called in for three forty-two Colt Highway CPD parent property, I'm letting you know that there will be no discussion on this matter this evening.
Thank you, Shannon. All right, so let's begin the public hearing portion of the meeting. For anyone that is new to this to our meeting or this process, the applicant, the applicant, excuse me, presents to the commission their request. We, as Commissioners, have a chance to ask questions. When we are done, we will turn it over to the public. We would like for the public, whoever's going in, to identify yourself, give us your address, and you may ask questions or speak in opposition or favor of the item. And then the presenter has a chance to reply, and we'll let you know where when each portion is taking place. So let's start it off. The first item in front of us for public hearing is an application from Michael Serena, and it's for property located at ten twenty-four Farmington Avenue. It's an application for waiver for the sale of alcohol, which includes beer and wine. And who do we have?
I believe we have Michael on the phone.
Okay, good evening.
Hey, everybody. How we doing?
Good, thank you.
So, Michael, if you can just briefly state your request, and then I will I'll jump in with some of the particulars the commission needs to be aware of.
Sure. So we're representing Claudia's
Your.
To the building, which is one of the things that we'd like to is. Oh, can you hear me now?
It's that's a little better right now. Yep.
Okay, how about now?
But much better. Wherever you are, don't move.
Don't move. I got you. No problem. Okay, let me start over. So representing Claudia's Grinder Shop, as you know, we are currently building out the space across the street to be moving hopefully in the spring at ten twenty-four, which is the old driving range building, but it'll still be shared with the driving range, the whole property there. Anyways, so the idea is to apply, we would like to apply for a beer and wine license to basically just sell local beers. We like we'd like to give it a try. So basically, what I'm asking for is a waiver from the town to get permission from the town to apply with the state's liquor commission, and just need a few signatures from everybody. But obviously, we need a permission, and that's what we're looking to do. So if anybody has any questions, be more than happy to answer.
Thank you. Go ahead, Shannon.
So, yep, thank you. Thank you, Mike. And just for the for the commission, for the record, that the application was submitted in in conformance with Article Four, Section Five of our regulations, and it requires a special hearing, special permit with public hearing when the sale is for consumption of alcoholic beverages on premise is going to be located within fifteen hundred feet of another use that is already permitted for sale of consumption of alcohol on premise. And in this case, the location for the proposed Claudia is at ten twenty-four Farmington Avenue is within fifteen hundred feet of Farmington Gardens, the bamboo Asian cuisine and green tea Chinese restaurant, all of which already have liquor permits for the sale and consumption of alcohol on premise. There's an additional provision if the location's within five hundred feet of any lot used for a college school, church, hospital, or library. And in this case, it's within five hundred feet of the Coder School located at ten fifty-one Farmington Avenue. While not a traditional school, it does have children on a regular basis that are engaging and before-after school and summer programs there. At the commission's discretion, the commission may grant a waiver of the above requirement with a five-six vote of the members upon finding that such waiver will not cause undue concentration of liquor outlets in the area will be in harmony with the general purpose of the zoning regulations, will not cause the proximity of the proposed outlet to schools, churches, public playgrounds, and residential zones to be adversely affected, and will not cause the location and size of the proposed outlet, the size of the site in relation there, too, and its location with respect to access to streets, et cetera, to hinder appropriate development or and or cause issues with traffic. So so that's why this is before you this evening. And again, it needs a five-six vote in order to grant that waiver.
Okay, and then the next step is?
Well, and then he so then he has to provide for his liquor license, which so this approval will allow me I have to sign off on the liquor application to the state of Connecticut.
Thank you.
So.
All right. So thank you to the applicant. Thank you, Shannon, for the additional information. Commissioners, let's turn it over to you to see if you have any questions. Patrick, you go first?
Um, yeah, I mean, it's it's stated pretty clearly, but it's just wine and and beer. That's it. No hard liquor there?
That is correct. It would just be just beer and wine, actually, local beers, to be specific, probably no more than three or four, maybe a couple wines, but that's about it.
Yeah, and then obviously, it's all on on the premise, right?
Of course, yes.
Correct. Yeah, no more questions. No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Mike?
I have no questions, and I have no issues with any of those stipulations for the waiver.
Okay, great. Scott?
Yeah, just a quick question, trying to refresh myself from earlier conversations. What are the hours that you're planning? Again, your hours of operation?
So currently, right now, we're open till three o'clock every day at our current location. The new location, we're going to propose some longer hours in the summer, more like towards the end of the week. So perhaps maybe six, seven o'clock on like a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, as there's, you know, quite a few people frequenting that area at the driving range and all that, and then maybe like a five o'clock or so Monday to Wednesday.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that. Yeah, I don't have any other questions or any concerns at this point.
Okay, Scott, thank you. Matt H?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz?
My questions have been asked. Thanks.
All right, you got it. Mike Walsh?
No questions.
Thank you. James?
No questions here.
All right, and Matt Bandel?
Yeah, just I guess clarification on the term premises. So this application is for ten twenty-four Farmington Avenue, which also includes the the driving range. Would alcohol be applicable or allowed on the driving range as well?
That's a good question. I did speak with with an liquor commission agent. Technically, no, that building and the patio area, which is the area that I'm leasing, that is the only area that is applicable. We already discussed with the owners how we're going to take care of the more likely I'll probably be in, you know, getting waitstaff for the summer for the later hours and all that, just to keep everything on the enclosed patio area with plenty of signage, letting people know that you cannot take all that, you know, like alcoholic beverages past this point, et cetera, et cetera. So, yeah, so again, it's going to be for inside and patio use only, just like any restaurant, like you can't take it outside to that point.
Good. Thank you.
No problem.
Good question. Thank you. I do not have any new questions either, but this is a public hearing. So Shannon, let's see if anyone called in regarding this application.
Okay, if you have called in to offer comment or have a question regarding the application at ten twenty-four Farmington Avenue for Michael Serena for the sale of wine and beer at Claudia's Restaurant, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom, and you will be acknowledged to address the commission. Again, if anyone's called in to offer a question or comment, we've got one. Albert, you should be, yeah, if you could provide your full name and address, and and then feel free to go ahead with your comment, Albert.
Thank you, Shannon. So Albert Tomaso, One Eaton Place, Farmington, Connecticut.
Hi, how you doing?
Hey, Mike. So, yeah, representing the the landowners, the Tomaso Group, we're thrilled to have Mike and Claudia's coming across the street as our new tenant. It's actually been a long-term dream of mine to. It's actually been a long-term dream of mine to have beer and wine out on that patio that they're leasing from us. And I think it'll create a really nice atmosphere for people driving home, especially on the weekends to stop by there. It's a short walk to the mini golf for date night, and I think will be a real attraction here in Farmington.
Totally agree.
Thank, thank you very much.
Yeah, we're definitely excited to be working with Albert and the Tomaso family on this project. I think it's going to be a fantastic thing and we're really, really excited to continue to serve Farmington Valley for hopefully for many years to come over there.
Same here, Mike.
Thank you, and thank you for calling in.
Welcome.
Okay, so I've got one, one more time if anyone else has called in with respect to this application at ten twenty-four Farmington Avenue, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom and you'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Madam Chair, there are no other hands raised.
All right, before we close the public hearing, commissioners, any last minute questions? Okay, so at this point, the public hearing on this application for Michael Serena is closed. Commissioners, you know what you're voting on? I need a motion and a second, please.
Yeah. Yeah, Patrick Carrier, I'd like to make a motion to approve the application by Michael Serena at, at one thousand twenty-four Farmington Avenue for waiver for the sale of alcohol, beer and wine, as presented.
Thank you. Second?
Liz Sanford, I second.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, it's unanimous. You are all set. Thank you.
Thank you everyone so much. Everybody has a great night.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Bye bye.
Bye bye. All right, next public hearing item in front of us is an application from Ashley and Andrew Kidd. It's regarding a lot number eight, seven, four, five on River Road in Unionville. And it's an application for change of zone from C one to R twenty for construction of single family home. And who do we have?
I believe we have Ashley on the phone.
Hi, good evening. Yes, I'm here as well as Andrew and Todd Clark of Blue Moon Design. We're here this evening to propose the zone change as mentioned by Madam Chairman. It is in the Unionville section of Farmington and we are asking to change it from C one to R twenty. That is exactly what the neighborhood to the left on your diagram is zoned currently, Bingley's Bend. So that is what we're trying to match here. North of us is actually land owned by CLNP. The river is to our east. Southern at one sixty is the Cardinals. And then the Farmington, Connecticut Trail is to our left. We recently approved, approved, we received approval from Inlands and Wetlands Commission. They've given us four contingencies that are listed. Shannon has listed them. The commission also conducted a site walk as a part of that process to see the adjacencies and the topography. North on this common driveway here is actually another residence that is zone commercial as well. And then two properties below it, there is a mixed-use commercial as well as an apartment building. Our home design, we are proposing a three-bedroom, two-bathroom home with attached tubar garage and a full basement. Our design is mostly one-story as we anticipate this being our forever home. The footprint is roughly twenty-three hundred square feet and seventeen eighty plus or minus being heated living space. This, the home will have a private well to the rear of the property as well as a connection into the public sewer. There's a sewer lateral branching off of the, the rail to trails there. Yes, thank you, Shannon. We are uncertain if there's natural gas within reach, but if not, we will use propane for heating. And that's my presentation.
Nice job. Thank you. And did you mention someone else may be on or no?
She's got her husband and, and her father are available if there's other questions.
Got it. Thank you. Welcome. Good evening. Thank you. You did a good job. Thank you. Okay. That's the presentation. Awesome. Let's turn it over to our commissioners for questions. Patrick, questions for the Kidd family?
I do not have any questions. Thank you.
All right. Mike Grabulis?
I have no questions either, like you.
Thank you. Scott?
I also do not have any questions. Thank you.
All right, and Matt?
No questions. Next.
Liz?
No questions. Thorough presentation. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mike Walsh?
No questions.
Thank you. James?
No questions here.
All right, and Matt?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Kind of full house, right? It takes a minute or two. So just, just a couple of little things. Communication that we, the notices were sent. No comments from anyone?
Correct.
I heard I had two phone calls myself, but they were all just pleasant and just wondering what we were up to.
Ah, that's great. So excellent. Thank you. The entrance, so it's not a new driveway cut, or is it?
It is not. It is a current paved driveway that is shared by property one sixty-two CLNP and the two properties below it.
Okay, so it's like an angle, right?
Correct. It comes down. It actually crosses the rails to trail.
Okay.
To get out onto River Road.
Okay.
So there's a slight cross.
All right, because I was, I, I am not sure why I wrote this down, but if the entrance was going to be a little somewhere else, it, it, people tend to fly around the corner?
Sure.
Okay, so it's an existing.
It's an existing, yeah, existing driveway that is shared. So it's an access drive that actually more fronts on the river.
Okay. And inland, wetland, we have the items from them. Yeah, I, I don't have any questions. Yeah, that's awesome. Yeah. All right, so it's a public hearing. So Shannon, if you can check to see if anyone has called in regarding this application?
Absolutely. Yes, if anyone's called in to offer a comment or have questions regarding Ashley and Andrew Kidd application at eight, seven, four, five River Road to change the zone from C one to R twenty, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom to be acknowledged to address the commission. Okay, John Jacobs. John, you should be able to unmute your microphone. Please, your full name and address for the commission.
Hi, my name is John Jacobson and I live at one sixty-two River Road, which is the beginning of the driveway that would be accessed by them. And I just wanted to say that both my wife and I support the project and changing it to R twenty.
Okay, thank you for calling in.
Thank you. Okay, if anyone else has called in to share a comment with the commission regarding this application at eight, seven, four, five River Road for the change of zone from C one to R twenty, please raise your hand. And you'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Madam Chair, there's no other hands raised.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, before I close the public hearing, do you have any last minute questions? Okay, so at this point, the public hearing is closed and let's take a vote. I need a motion in a second, please.
Yeah, Patrick here, I'd like to make a motion to approve the application by Ashley and Andrew Kidd for change of zone at lot eight, seven, four, five River Road from C one to R twenty for construction of a single-family home.
Second?
Liz Sanford, I second.
All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you. And good luck with the process. Absolutely welcome. All right. Moving right along, the next item is an application from Mott Corporation, which is an existing business here in town. It's for a property at sixteen ninety New Britton Avenue. It's an application for special permit and site plan approval for change of use to manufacturing or portion of the building. And I know the documentation was great on this one. You're going to pull it up too for us, okay?
Yeah. All right, and the presentation. And I'm not sure who's taken the lead. Jim Cassidy, are you taking the lead with us?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take the lead on it. So good evening for the record. My name is Jim Cassidy, Special Engineer and Principal with the firm of Halcy Pearson in Cassidy. My office is located at six thirty Main Street in Cromwell, Connecticut. With me this evening, I have Chris Foster of CHK Architects. He's our project architect for this application. And for the applicant representation interest, I see Mike Lestro online also. He represents the Mott Corporation. We're here tonight, we're seeking a special permit for a change of use of an existing building, a portion of an existing building located at six ninety New Britton Avenue here in Farmington. And also a site plan modification to this existing site. As I mentioned, what's happening is Mott Corporation is looking at moving a portion of their business over to the building at six ninety New Britton Avenue. If no one knows what Mott Corporation is, and Mike, excuse me if I get this wrong and you can chime in. But Mott Corporation is founded in nineteen fifty-nine. It's been creating engineered building filtration solutions and flow control solutions for its customers for over sixty years. Mott Solutions range from multi, multi-story systems to micro microscopic implants to support a long list of industries such as semiconductors, clean energy, bioprocessing, medical, pharmaceutical, aerospace, diagnostic food, beverage, refining and petroleum and so on and so forth. Mott's proposal for this property is to move again a portion of the building over to sixteen ninety New Britton Avenue. These operations include the sales and the manufacturing of porous titanium sheets to support clean industry makers as well as welding and fabrication operations for pervious filters or porous filters on to support processing systems. Shannon, can you flip one slide?
Of course.
If you're not familiar with the existing site, the first slide we have up is a Google or photo of the existing property. Again, the address is sixteen ninety New Britton Avenue. The property, the overall property itself outlined in yellow on this page consists of about twenty-seven point zero one acres, C one industrial zone land. It's located on the westerly side of New Britton Avenue on this page. North is off to your right. And New Britton Avenue is down to the bottom. And it has about twenty-one hundred and eighty, a little over twenty-one hundred and eighty feet of frontage along the Britton Avenue. You'll see that the southern two-thirds is presently developed. And it contains an existing building that was, used to be Hamilton Standard, was converted back, I believe, about two thousand fourteen to an office building. But the building itself is a one-story structure with a total footprint area of one hundred and sixty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty-three square feet. It contains three curb cuts, one down at the far south or left hand of the property. Another one located to the center. This someone primarily provides access to a large parking field to the north. In addition to provides access to a loading area. And then you have that far north curb cut, which also provides access to that larger parking area. Presently on the site, there's a total of two hundred and ninety-four parking spaces, nineteen of them being handicapped accessible spaces. On the far north end, presently is an open meadow and is circumference around its entire perimeter by rows of deciduous trees. The property itself, if you take a look at it, the topography is relatively flat. The elevations range from about one, sorry, two twenty-eight, sloping in a very gradual direction off to the, to the east or New Britton Avenue, along with a large parking field that's on the, the center portion of the site. The lowest area is elevation two eighteen, which consists basically of the loading dock area. The site is presently serviced by public sewer and public water. In addition to, there is a drainage system on the site. Majority of this drainage from this property discharges off to the east, to the opposite side in the Britton Avenue. I was responsible for the site plans for the prior development of the site. As part of that, we did incorporate stormwater quality measures such as hydrodynamic separators for parking areas. So all water off the site is presently treated. In addition to at the far, we'll say the southeast or the back left corner of the property, we built an infiltration basin to pick up that section of the parking lot. Excuse me. Can you flip one more page, Shannon? So we have a site plan that's submitted and with the proposal is to take the northeast corner of the building, which is highlighted in yellow on this page. That area consists of about forty-four thousand one hundred and fifty-one square feet. We're looking to change the use of that portion of the building. Mott's would be occupying that portion of that area. It'd be broken down into two uses. Six thousand seven hundred and ninety-one square feet would remain as an office use. The remaining thirty-seven thousand one hundred and ninety-one square feet would become a manufacturing use. Once again, this would be for the manufacturing of porous titanium sheets, that also welding of porous filters. So those two operations, the front portion would remain as office. After my portion of the presentation, I'll have Chris Foster get up and he can explain a little bit more about the inside of the building. Shannon, can you flip one more sheet? I might actually have to go to. So on this sheet, what we've done is we overlaid the proposed modifications to the site into the building on that aerial photo. I'm going to have Shannon go one more sheet just because it blows up the area, makes it a little easier to see. So once again, the highlighted yellow area is the portion of the building that's going to have the change of use. Off to the north portion of the building is presently an existing loading area. We're going to be doing some modifications to that loading area. Number one, we're going to be extending the pavement off to the north to allow better maneuvering for trucks, delivery trucks that will be going into that area. In particular, there will be some semi trucks that will need to come into that area. There are the two larger white rectangles that you see on this plan and be able to back up to those loading doors. In addition to, on the far north of this, of this expanded loading area, we are looking at putting two fuel tanks. These will be two, three thousand above ground fuel tanks. One would be housing liquid nitrogen and the other one would be providing housing liquid argon and both would be three thousand gallons. They will be mounted to pad. They are vertical tanks that are proposing to go in. In addition to, there's another large rectangle off to the north. This is a proposed area for a backup generator that's going to be constructed as part of the modifications to the site. Up against the building, you'll see another darker rectangle. On this, you see four tan areas if you blow up a little bit.
Ah, the regeneration on this, this is a huge file, Jim. That's all right.
So what these are, are they going, they're going to be AC condensing units, basically cooling units to provide a closed loop geoco system for water cooling of some vacuum furnaces that are going to be located in the building. And in addition to that, just down below, you'll see a covered walkway area. That's an existing walkway that's going to remain. The other item we're looking at doing is we're looking at upgrading electrical service to this section of the building. So it'll be three new transformers going right where the hand is. Where you see the condensing units with the green area around it, that's presently a patio area that's utilized by occupants of the building. We are going to be constructing a new patio for occupants of this section of the building right where that cross here is. In addition to for site modifications, what happened is as we push these, the generator pad and the gas pad out in the loading area. If you were to go out there today, would you find this is a retaining wall and then a slope up from that retaining wall up to the upper parking lot? We're proposing to eliminate that retaining wall. We're going to grade the area behind it. It's about a ten-foot difference in grade. So we're grading from those pads up to the upper parking lot. This is requiring we relocate the driveway on the upper portion. This would be a landscape slope from the loading dock area to the upper portion. In addition to what happens on this particular site, if you were to take a look at it today, what you would find in the C one zone is for total and pervious coverage, you're allowed to have a total of forty percent. This site is already grandfathered in. It exceeds a forty percent. It's at forty-three point four percent. Because we're adding the additional pervious area for the loading dock area, what we need to do is compensate so we don't go further in the pervious coverage that was presently out there today. So what you'll see to the north of the driveway is we're going to be incorporating being some landscape islands within the parking area. So we'll be almost slightly actually below the existing pervious coverage that's out here today. Can you go one more sheet, Shannon?
Yes.
This is our zoning bulk table. So zoning requirements, there are no physical changes to the proposed footprint of the building. So all the requirements such as setback of building coverage and setbacks to the property line would remain the same. As I mentioned. As I mentioned, uh with the new islands and the additional landscape area, there's a very slight uh reduction in the overall impervious coverage, uh it was at forty-three point four before, it's going to be at forty-three point three. Parking requirements, uh I did notice, I apologize, that there was one little typo on the parking schedule. Uh the first column, uh the first row uh deals with the changed portion of the building. Um based upon the uses that'll be in there uh for the man industrial manufacturing use, we're requiring one space for every employee for larger shifts. Uh we technically uh broke it down, uh included both uh the first and second shift that are proposed for this operation for a total of thirty-two employees, uh so there's thirty-two spaces provided for those employees. In addition to, uh as I mentioned, there will be six thousand seven hundred and ninety square feet of office remaining uh which at a rate of one per uh two twenty-five requires me another thirty point two. Uh the next column actually says existing portion of building two remains rather than changed portion. Um but based upon the existing portion of the building to remain as office is one hundred and seven uh thousand five hundred and six, requiring another four hundred and seventy-seven point eight spaces. So technically, we need a total of um five hundred and forty parking spaces. Uh as I mentioned previously on the site right now, there's eight hundred and ninety-four spaces, nineteen of them being handicapped with the modifications we're doing for the relocation of the driveway. Uh and then also um adding the landscape items, we're actually taking away uh thirty spaces, so it actually brings us to something eight hundred and sixty-four spaces. So we easily meet and exceed uh all the requirements uh for parking in this area and also um the zone requirements to see one zone. Um can you go one more page, Shannon? Uh this is just a quick demonstration of how the impervious coverage works. Uh the areas in red are a new additional uh impervious areas. Uh there is in green are the areas of new landscaping. Uh so one again, when you go through the math, you'd actually find out there's actually a slight increase uh landscape area overall. Uh one more page, Shannon. Uh as part of our application, as I mentioned, uh we are proposing to put the tanks in the uh the the uh gas tanks on the generator. Again, I'll point out, uh those tanks are actually located, the pad that sit on is about ten feet below the parking grade above. Uh the tanks are vertical, uh Chris Foster will get into uh what they're going to look like in a little while. Uh but they do stand upright, um I think the overall height was about twenty-two feet. So what we're proposing for screening is at the top of the slope, uh we're proposing to put a series of evergreen trees. Uh initially, we looked at putting a herbivide in there per staff recommendations, uh they were changed to spruce. Uh in addition to on the opposite side of the driveway, uh to uh offer some additional screening, we're also proposing another row of evergreen trees in that area. And also, now that we have these new landscape islands within the parking lot, uh we're going to put with a series of canopy trees. We have black uh tuba uh and those landscape islands, which are tolerant um to uh parking applications. Uh and then also, we've also had a couple of herbivide uh down in the area where we have the new transformers uh for some additional screening. So the overall landscaping uh will be upgraded uh as part of this application. Um the next two slides, Shannon, um. Uh we did submit an erosion sediment control plan as part of the application. Um there's not a lot of activity going on on this application. Uh what we're simply doing is we have a section of the upper driveway that will be getting relocated. Uh we will have a temporary uh tracking pad along that driveway. Uh the majority of the excavation of that slope will probably happen from the upper parking lot. Uh once that uh slope is regraded, uh there will be an erosion control blanket put on it. Uh and as also mentioned, all the drainage is presently in, there's no changes to the drainage system. Uh so all catch basins uh within that parking area are protected uh with silt sacks uh to ensure we get no sediment into the overall system. Uh again, a little bit about the operation, I I kind of briefly uh touched on it. Um the proposal for the uh for the manufacturing portion of the building, uh we're looking at two shifts right now. The first shift would consist of twenty-four employees, uh there will be a second shift uh that will go to a little earlier than midnight, uh and it consists of another eight employees, so we're looking at a total of thirty-two employees uh within the manufacturing portion of the building. Operation schedule uh is typically five days a week, um again, two shifts for a total of sixteen hours a day. Uh potentially overtime on Saturdays and Sundays um for um for truck deliveries. Uh what we're typically looking at is six to eight trucks per day. Of those, three to four per week would be tractor trailers. Uh and of those, one is anticipated for a monthly delivery of the nitrogen argon gas. Uh as part of the comments we received from staff, um we had gone through, uh we've added additional things such as turn maneuver plans to ensure the tractor trailer getting down into that loading area adequately um back up to the doors and also pull up uh to the uh inlet from the gas tanks. Uh we also personally, uh as a group, we actually had a tractor trailer go out there and maneuver through this area to make sure Mott's is comfortable uh with the deliveries. The remaining trucks uh would be smaller, um box type trucks uh that would be taking deliveries throughout the week. Traffic is the only other thing I would like to uh point on, uh then I'm going to turn it over to Chris. Um again, the whole office building is presently uh designed, I'm sorry, the whole building is presently designed for office. Um if we were to take a look at the office use based upon the I T E E trip generation manual uh for an office use of this size and uh style one-story building, um the anticipated uh trip generation uh would be about ten point eight four trips per thousand square feet. So we're looking at about thirty-seven hundred square foot area. So based upon the existing use, uh it could trip, it could generate up to about four hundred and one trips. Manufacturing, converting it to manufacturing actually brings us to a much lower uh usage uh for from the I T E manual for manufacturing use, uh the chip trend is about four point seven five for thirty-seven thousand square foot manufacturing area. Uh you're looking at a chip generation on a daily basis, uh weekdays of a hundred and seventy-five trips, which actually promotes a a reduction uh in chip generations uh by converting this area to a manufacturing use. Um so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chris Foster, uh he could talk a little bit more about the building. Uh then if you like, uh we submitted uh our special permit criteria, explaining how we feel we know all the requirements of special permit, uh and I can go over those individually if the commission would like. So Chris, you want to add on?
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, thank you, thank you, Jim. If you want to go to uh page uh eleven, I believe it is, one more, I think. So what you see here is the northeast corner of the existing building at sixteen ninety New Britain Ave. There's three zones right now, this whole area is classified as a business occupancy, which right now for this is shown uh as to what we're proposing. Um the area in blue is what would stay as the business occupancy. Um right now, it's office space, some open office space, some uh collaboration space, uh conference room for the sales and some me- meeting and collaboration space for their shop floor uh to oversee, which would be the spaces on the right. The two identical rooms on the right, the lower corner. Um the red is what would become the overall ma- manufacturing floor uh as an F one use use group. Um the bottom of that area is would be their welding or their S T V S operation where they make the perforated tubes um which is currently housed at eighty-four Spring Lane uh in Plainville, and this will be moving over here so they can put a second T I titanium processing line in that existing facility over eighty-four. So this is all existing equipment they have over eighty-four Spring Lane, so we do have a good understanding of what's going on over there as well as any type of penetrations in the building. Uh up above, above that, you'll see two identical lines, those are the new uh titanium processing lines that they're looking to put in here. The we show two for now, right now, uh their goal by end of this year, October, is to have the first line, which is the westmost, the one at the top of the page, to be up and running by October uh for processing, testing, certification, and then product will be hopefully going out beginning of next year. The second line would not be planned until roughly October twenty twenty-four. Um the area in green is what is an H three area, which um right where the hand is um in the section mark uh is a loading dock over to the right from where the cursor is, is the new loading dock that we're uh proposing. Up above there in the white area are the two existing loading docks, which serve the whole building. So we need to create a new loading dock to allow us to bring in and export uh bring in and export uh product um without affecting the rest of the building. Um this area, the H three is just classified that due to the initial product powder that's coming in there. That code is when required for an hour separation from the rest of the facility. Uh so that's why we have the two different um uh color destinations. F one doesn't require any separation from the rest of the building and near it as a business occupancy. Um we have created a couple of new egress points uh from the existing building, one is the loading dock, uh just above the loading dock, there's a new egress for out from there, and then down at the bottom page out by the patio. Um there's a new egress there. Up above that one, you'll see a couple locker rooms and a couple uh new restrooms. Uh there, there's currently restrooms relatively in that area, we're just sliding it down. Above that, you see the existing double doors, which are underneath the existing covered walkway uh which were not affecting that walkway at all, that existing walkway that is covered remains there, and this is solely a mock entrance to the building, there's no public entrance here. There is no other uh people that use a facility that'll be coming in here. So this is solely a mock entrance to the building. Um and then I, and then above that, uh double doors is the new electrical room. Uh most of this equipment uses electricity and uh fuels to power the furnaces, which is part of the T I line or the roll mill. Above that, it's just a process cooling, which is basically a water tank that cools the furnaces as uh they're trying to warm down as they cycle down. Above that's just the remainder of the hazardous storage, which uh we show a lot more than will actually be in there um from this process, and then above that's the new loading dock. If you want to go to the next page, um this one is uh shows what's going on the roof. A lot of this stuff is currently over the eighty-four Spring Lane. Uh this, there's really little bit going on there, the larger squares, which are roughly six by six by six feet high are what we're proposing. Uh we're still trying nail down the final size and quantity, but that's what we're proposing for the new rooftop units to heat and cool the F one area and the H three area, the existing office area will be um being cooled by its existing uh units that are in the building, so there's no change for the existing office area. The just to the this right side or the north side where you have the squares, we have the stacks from the furnaces, you can see five very small. Uh they're roughly four inch diameter uh six feet tall, four feet tall uh PVC pipes that are black. Um and then there's uh two identical pipes side by side, those are from the um wetback, which it helps keeps the powder down, uh waste product, it'll suck it in. Those are just kind of air makeup for that uh exhaust for or wetback furnace or wetback, sorry. Oh, and those units are roughly galvanized, but they they're about six feet tall um and have a goose neck down. Uh the existing roof line, what you see kind of around there with the lap uh lines are all, it's existing um is existing green uh standing seam roof on a pitch, and that roof, the edge of that roof line, leading edge is about forty-two to forty-three inches above the existing flat roof for all the new equipment that is going on there. Based on the equipment we see and everything going there, roughly the equipment would be about uh maybe two feet higher than the existing roof line, and um the only other change we're doing is where the section mark is right uh two column grids above your cursor. Um Shannon, right there, um we're proposing to raise the roof line, it will be seven inches above the existing high of the roof line, and reason to do this is create a larger loading dock door. That's the other reason we're creating a new loading dock is the existing structure and along the perimeter is not high enough to accept the equipment. Uh so we have to raise the roof structure slightly and uh provide a larger entrance door, a twelve by twelve overhead door on the side. Um if you go to the next uh next slide. Here, here are the elevations, so the top one um is the north elevation of the existing facility. As you can see, uh if you go back about three more column line or one more column right there, whoops. You're still left, uh one more column, there's a new entrance we're pointing in, which would is, I shouldn't say entrance, but as part from the cafeteria, it allows them out to the new patio we're putting in. To the right, two column base, you see the existing covered walkway and the existing pair of doors, which will be the main employee entrance from the upper lot. Um which the stairs to the upper lot are right behind us, and then the existing fenced area um right now, that is uh the existing um employee um patio, which would be changed out for um for condenser units, which helps process and cool the uh the furnaces on inside. Um and that's uh that would be at the elevation that the existing patio is at, which um starts that grade, and then on the sides, about two and a half feet above grade because the grade slips down to loading docks. Right where the cursor is, is the new overhead door, that would be a twelve by twelve. Um and then we're bumping up the uh middle, the next, the roof of it, so we can get it up, erase it up to get the equipment in there. Uh we are calling for just a small canopy above the overhead door, roughly sixteen feet wide, comes out six feet from the building uh with one down light underneath just to help illuminate that uh area. Um and the main reason is for some of the shipments, like now it it's dark at four, and some of the shipments leave a little bit after four, four thirty. So that's kind of help uh illuminate that area where the trucks will be coming in if they come in that way. Um the side of the, the side of the bump up will be a metal panel under green to match the existing standing seam roof. The roof, which you will not see from anywhere, will be pitching back towards the yep, pitching back towards the um existing flat roof, and that will be a T P O or E P D M membrane roof. Um and then the only other change we're making to this elevation is if you go over to column line, I think it's H uh three more to the right, two more right there, uh one more over to the right. Um I think it's column line H, it's hard to see, one more to the right. Um right there, that's a new entrance we're putting in um as part of the emergency egress. Um so that's, that's the extent of that, there will be stairs coming down because that one is a higher elevation. The next one down, detail two, um this is just kind of showing the sightline from sixteen ninety New Britain Ave. Um and as you follow that dash line or to the right, you can see there is a high stack right there that we're showing the first piece of equipment, but we're thinking where you will get that stacked down to six feet from twelve feet. Um and then the two, then the units to the right are there are what we're uh proposing, or believe will be the largest pieces of equipment on the roof, which will be the six by six uh H V A C units that'll be uh mounted on the roof. Um so once you get uh back, you will not see those equipment, if you do see them, they can be painted. Um so we do not have any concerns with that. Um if you look at detail three, that's just showing how the new bump up um is uh extending the existing sloped roof line of the existing building, so you can see how much farther that comes up from the uh um the existing sloped roof line, which is not, not much, I think we're raising the overall roof uh seven inches um on the far side, and then it pitches back, if you want to go down to the next detail down. There you go, um so you see, and then we show the canopy right there. Um and then detail four is basically a cross section from the site where we have the new loading dock. You can see the existing truss of the sloped roof with a new uh slop, new sloped roof, almost flat roof right above it, uh the truss is the existing roof structure. Um you can see the loading dock, and then we can see the first dimension, I believe, is about eighty-five feet, which is from the face of building to where the uh existing retaining wall is, that's about four feet tall. And then we're providing roughly another fif- ten to fifteen feet to the beginning of the tank farm. Uh the dash line is the existing um covered walkway, which comes down from the upper lot, which is behind you, so all this, all this stuff takes place beyond that existing roof line. Uh the first uh vessel you see is one of the two tanks. Um they're nineteen and a half feet tall, about eight and a half feet diameter, they're metal, they're painted white. Um and then the other thing you see in this area is uh the um evaporators, which are a galvanized color, um they're roughly four foot by six feet by about twelve feet tall, and that's part of the um evaporation as you fill and discharge the tanks. Uh the tanks are argon and uh nitrogen. Um and then the dash line you see kind of in that area is the size of the generator, which is behind you as well. Uh we're working in the process of seeing how much we could reduce that generator, right now it's about nine feet wall wide, uh fourteen feet tall and about, I think it's about thirty-two feet long. Um and that generator does have the acoustical shroud around it for noise, and our, our understanding right now is it needs to be tested once a month, make sure it's in good working condition, and then that generator is only used if there's a loss of power to help cool the furnaces long enough, so it does not uh damage the existing furnaces, so this generator is not intended to run a processing line. It's just intended to uh safely shut down all the uh furnaces and equipments. It's just intended to uh safely shut down all the uh furnaces and equipment. So there isn't a. Uh, damage to the existing equipment. So if power goes out, it would run long enough to cool down the furnaces. Um, all the other lighting and emergency stuff that's required has battery backups in there and those are not on the, on this generator. Um, and then towards the right, you kind of see the sloping from the existing pad up to the, up to the upper parking lot. And then a little bit further, you'll see the uh just kind of the um metal guard rail. And then really from there on is the drive aisle over. Um, so that's kind of, those are kind of the uh. Main item to know I was pretty quick. Uh, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
So uh, again, Jim Cassidy, for the record, there's a couple other things I'd like to add. Um. Uh, there's some questions about site lighting out here. Um, we, as Chris had mentioned. Um, the only lighting that's being really added to this is uh where the new loading dock doors are in the canopies. Uh, there will be some uh downcast light uh at those canopies just to light that door. In addition to where the passage doors are that he had mentioned. Uh, there has to be a typical wall scum uh at those doors uh to provide safe lighting at each one of the doors. Uh, the only other lighting in the loading area is where the tank farm is. Um, there is a pipe uh for filling suction. Uh, into those tanks. There will be a light at each one of those filling points. Uh, that light will only be utilized. Uh, when they're actually doing a filling operation, if it happens to happen uh during non daylight hours. Um, the overall site, all the other existing lighting is remaining. Um, the site itself is actually broken down into two zones. Uh, all the lower parking, which is to the uh west, to the east and to the south of the building is all one zone. Uh, that's where the majority of the cars park uh during daylight hours. The upper parking area is a separate zone. Um. Uh, this area is the area where we are anticipating uh that a lot of the second shift employees would be parking. Um, so right now all these lights are on photo sentences and also on timers. Uh, based upon the upper parking lot being utilized uh as a second ship. Uh, that parking area would be on to midnight or slightly thereafter, but we did propose on the far north end of the property. Away from, there's only one residence that's off to the south or to the far left. Uh, so it's away from all residents, away from all um of those type of operations on this particular site. Um, so again, the only new lighting is really in that loading dock area. All the other existing lighting would remain. Uh, so the other thing I've, I've, you know, I'll bring up and I don't know if you want me to go through it, but this is a special permit. Uh, application uh as part of your zoning regulations, we need to confirm uh compliance um with article. Um, article uh for section twelve uh paragraph B of the zoning regulations to say how we comply. Uh, with the seven criteria or special permit compliance. We did submit a thorough, I think, a detailed letter uh showing how we do submit. If you would like, I can go through each individual item or. Uh, members of commission have had a chance to read it or comfortable with it. I, I won't bore you because I know it's presentations going on. Quite a while here. So uh, it's up to the commission as to whether they want me to go through each item.
Thank you for the offer. We did receive the extensive documentation. Um, so thank you. If commissioners individually have questions, we'll address it. But thank you, Mr. Cassidy.
So with that, I would say we conclude our presentation and hopefully Chris, Mike and I can answer any questions uh that the commission may have.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Okay, commissioners, um, lots of information that we received in advance today. Um, hopefully you had a chance to process what was uh sent to you by Shannon. Let's run through the questions. Patrick, what questions do you have for the applicant?
Um, I mean, I, I really don't have too many. I, I read through all the comments, the thirty nine comments and. Uh, they, they pretty much, you guys pretty much checked each one of them off as we went along. Um, the stack was at, you said twelve feet, but it sounds like you're getting it down to six feet. Is that what you said? The one that was closest to the road?
Yes, that, that's our goal. We think we get about six feet, um, twelve feet on there roughly their existing uh facility. But based on the design we're proposing and our engineers are proposing, we think we're able to get it down closer to six feet. And that's kind of our goal to try to keep everything within that six foot range, but at this time that hasn't been fully designed.
And then how big is that stack? Is that a?
Uh, that one's. That, that one's sixteen inch diameter um and goose necks down. Um, the smaller stacks are about four feet tall, are about four inch black PVC. So you really won't see those about around the roof. So this one's about uh sixteen inch diameter galvanized.
And then you mentioned you would paint anything that, you know, to try to make it blend in as much as possible. It's something that you guys are gonna attempt to do.
Yep.
All right. The only other question that the um, so in here, there was some mention about second shift. There's no, no, no third shift.
So there's, there's, right now the proposals first and second shift. There is potential for a third shift. Uh, they gotta get it up and operational, see how it works. If they add an additional titanium line, it probably will go to a third shift. Uh, but Mike, you might want to chime on, on this and how far out that may be.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, we would, we're only planning for one line by the end of twenty twenty three. The second line, if we were to put it in, would likely be around the end of twenty twenty four, it would become operational. Uh, it would, and it likely would not be until that time that we would entertain a third shift. It, it, it's going to be. Predicated on how quickly the, the, the business scales this, this product line.
Okay. And then the other, one of the other comments was, was trying to keep second shift and I assumed third shift if it ever comes to that, but um. Uh, so they're parked, they're parking mostly up on the top section there. I guess it's not really feasible, right? They were trying to get them. So, so they're going to naturally park as close as possible to the building and I guess lighting was probably one of the bigger concerns. Um, on, on the uh, on the comments from engineering. Um, can you just speak to that a little bit more?
Jim, do you want to speak to that or would you like me to speak to it?
Well, I think, you know, we, we've gone over and the way we feel the operations to work is, you know, first shift would, you know, occupy more parking spaces. And they would tend to park closer to the building. Unfortunately, you got a little bit of an overlap. Um, so when that second shift comes in, they would tend to go to the upper portion of the site. Um, again, we've situated in a way, if you go out there. Um, it's as far away from any residence. There's one residence off to the south, which is technically. Back portion looks like it's used as like a logging operation. So it is, it's like a industrial type of use at the back portion. Um. You know, to, to, to the, to the west, it's, you know, Connecticut D E P properties, all woods to, to the east. Uh, it's connected D E P property, all woods. Uh, then we have a very significant metal area off to the north. Um, that's, but it's another commercial operation. Um. Quite honestly, uh, I live in the general area. I go through it quite often. Um. Cause I, you know, uh, you know, I've seen the lights on and it, it's, I, I think, I think it's well done on this property. Uh, it's pretty, that parking lot is pretty significantly off the road. Uh, I personally don't find it very intrusive, but I think it's a safe area to park. I think it's a safe site. Um, so you know, we prefer to be on that upper parking lot if at all possible.
Yeah, makes sense. I mean, that's, if I was for shift, I'd be parking as close to, to the building as possible. So. First come, first served. But um, yeah, no, that's it for questions for me. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Mike?
Uh, no real questions. Um, it was a very thorough presentation. Uh, your compliance statement. Um, pretty much answered any questions that I had. I don't think you got any problem with uh, with parking that parking lots pretty empty on a daily basis. Um. It's nice to see the building will get some use, but um. It's uh all the other uses in our industrial parks. So no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott?
No, I agree. Very, very thorough presentation. I don't have any questions either.
All right. Thank you. Matt?
Uh, thanks. No additional questions. Thank you.
You got it. Liz?
No, thank you for a thorough presentation. All my questions have been answered.
Mike Walsh?
No questions.
Thank you. James?
No questions.
And Matt B?
Uh, nothing additional. Appreciate it, guys.
Okay. Um, thank you. I have just a few comments, I guess, uh, but is anyone, Shannon, more for you? I lost track over the years. Is anyone else in that building?
I believe there are other existing tenants at the time. Um.
Yeah, so uh, there's an insurance company, A I G uh is in here.
Okay.
Uh, they occupy, I can't remember what percentage, but they do occupy a large percentage of the building. Uh, and if anyone asks a question, um, when you take a look at that northern parking lot, it looks like it's pretty well loaded with cars. I'm sure this picture was taken pre-COVID. Um, and if you go out there today, it's nowhere's near the number of cars in a parking lot, but it, eh, eh, we. In two thousand fourteen, we actually did an addition off on the, or the west side of this building, uh, to accommodate A I G uh when they were moving in.
And, and allied insurance also occupies um the back half of the building essentially.
Okay, thank you. Um. I'm assuming the tenants are aware that this is possibly coming or?
Yes, yes, they're aware.
Okay, thank you. Um. One thing that struck me and um, I, obviously I don't do anything with manufacturing, but uh, when I read the documentation, the word. Flammable came up a lot. So the two uses, the titanium powder into sheets and the welding. Um, it sounded like that maybe the welding was already being handled, but do you handle these today? I guess where I'm heading with this is. I'm assuming there's some industry uh safeguards in place for handling this. Disposing of this, I just wanted, just the flammable, just kind of, you know, put. Came up.
Sure, I'd be happy to address that. I'm sorry, Chris, do you want to take it or?
Uh, this, it's up to you. If you want to go back to the, I think it was slide nine, which kind of shows the interior, nine or old ten maybe. Maybe even eleven, there we go.
For the record, we, we, we've worked with these um materials for over ten years uh in our current facility. Uh, we have all the safeguards in place in the facility and, and um, we will actually be increasing the level of safeguarding into this facility. And that's, I think, what Chris is probably going to speak to here.
Yes, so, so basically, um, the flammable solid is a titanium powder. When it comes in, they come in classified. Um, um, you all classify storage containers. They'll come in off the truck, come through the no loading dock that we're creating. And when they're in the container, there's no uh, no. Possibility of them to become combustible. It's when you're kind of processing and moving around. It is moved in small quantities and it's a small, I, uh, Mikey could uh. Respond to this. It's a small. Fire combustible and it's, and it's, in its worst case, in the melt powder that's used is less. Um, what we do have here is we are removing the sprinkler from where there's the areas that can have the hazardous. Powder before it's processed in the roll mill to the sheets. And that is being supplemented or replaced with an argon fire system, which helps puts out the. Fire out quicker and allows people to get out of space. So there is a level of containment, the processing that they've gone to is a closed system. So the powder, I don't want to say will never get out, but the powder is always in a contained, you all approved vessel or piece of equipment. Prevent the powder and uh dust from circulating, but someone still gets out any, any type of manufacturing. But they've gone a long way to ensure all uh. All instances of this will be reduced. They will have the argon in there. I believe they are also looking at for a little spot areas. If it does happen, they are looking at, um, uh. Uh, I think it's salt that you would put on it to help reduce, to help put out the fire quicker. Um, these are quick burning, small little, almost like a flash that goes away. It's not long burning for each, for, for the instance, if it happens. All walls surrounding the H uh, H three area, which is a green, are one hour rated. All the doors, there are overhead doors to allow the forklift to move in and out and move product around. All those are on, um. Sensors and uh holdovers that tied into the fire alarm, same with the uh, the pedestrian doors in the space. Everything's on, everything's a rated door with ceiling gaskets and it's all, it's in the open position. But if there was to be an incident or the first alarm to go off to sense that there may be one coming, then those doors will shut. Uh, shut down and create a seal around this area. Uh, we have gone and separated or will go and separate this area from the existing quarter, which is right to the west. So that will help, um, that helps create a one hour rated uh room wherever you see the green. So, and each green room is really a one hour rated room within this, within that H three area. So there are very uh multiple fire containment areas for each room is kind of its own uh fire with its own. Either argon or sprinkler system depending on what the hazard is in there. So probably everything's right in there. In terms of egress, uh, special conditions under H three are required to allow you to egress with certain door hardware. Which is taken into.
Yeah, so, so just to reiterate, once the, once any material goes from the greens area there that you see into that. Um, uh, red area, uh, it is no longer considered. The, the processing that it goes through renders it no longer a flammable solid. So it's only a flammable solid while it exists in the green area and that is the area where we have the um increased fire protection. In addition, we, we, we handle it in small batches. Um, specifically so that if there is ever any sort of an event, um, it is at a controllable level. Um, and, and to Chris's point, in addition to the uh argon fire suppression system, we will have class C fire suppression. Uh, throughout, um, which will enable employees to actually um, um, put the fire out themselves. And they are, and they are, we will train them to do it. They are already trained to do it and we will continue to train them.
Safety first. Uh, great. Thank you very much for the uh detailed response. Um, is there, I was just, when you were describing, um. The generator pad, the whole, um, the tanks. Is there any chance of like car leaving the upper parking lot and hitting that area?
The, the guardrail between the upper parking area and that lower area.
Missed that. Okay, perfect. And then I think the only thing I, I was going to ask you is for the, and I, I know, you know, who the neighbors are. And you have a lot of obviously forests, but uh for the generator testing, like could that be done during the day?
I don't see why it couldn't, and it probably would be because they would want staff on site to make sure it's running in the operable um. Operal position when it's being utilized. So the testing would be during the day probably. And Mikey could weigh into this, but I believe it'll be during first shift, which is normal night, I think nine to five or seven to five, uh, seven to three year first shift. Um, so it would probably be in, we could say it'd be between the nine and three in the afternoon. So it's during the noisiest part of the day. Again, and again, that generates only a case if there's a loss of power and the T I line is still up and right. It just goes long enough to cool down. The uh furnaces.
Makes sense. Thank you. I think that's it for me. Um, so let's turn it over to see if anyone called in regarding this project in favor of acquisition. Thank you, Shannon.
We did receive written correspondence from the Economic Development Commission and I believe. Uh, the chair, Bill Wadsworth is on the phone. So we'll start with Mr. Wadsworth.
Sure.
And then uh, and then open it up to general comment. Bill, you should be able to, there you go. Unmute your microphone. You're away to the races.
Good to go. Thank you. Uh, as I was said, my name is Bill Wadsworth, seventy three Red Oak Hill Road. Farmington. I'm here on behalf of the town of Farmington as chair of the Economic Development Commission. And I just, we, we did submit a letter on December twenty first supporting this project. I just want to cherry pick a couple of paragraphs or sentences. At a regular meeting of the Farmington Economic Development Commission held on December fourteenth, two thousand twenty two. The E D C commissioner has voted unanimously to support the application pending before the town planning and zoning commission. The economic impact statement supplied by Mott Corporation stated a project investment of seventeen million dollars. And anticipated creation of sixty to ninety full-time manufacturing jobs. And between ten to fifteen full-time professional jobs. This is exactly the kind of. Development that has served Farmington so well over the past sixty five years. So with that, on behalf of the Economic Development Commission. I support Mott Corp- Corporations' application for a special permit, site plan approval. For change of use to manufacturing for a portion of the office building at sixteen ninety. New Britain Avenue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, and with that, we will now open it up to general public comments. So if anyone has called in. To uh offer comment or have questions regarding the Mott Corporation application at sixteen ninety New Britain Avenue. Please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom and you will be acknowledged to address the commission. Okay, one more time, if you have called in to offer comment regarding Mott Corporation at sixteen ninety New Britain Avenue. Please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom and you'll be acknowledged to address the commission.
Okay.
Uh, come. Colleen?
Oh, okay.
Colleen, you've got, uh, you should be able to unmute your microphone and each yourself. Colleen, you are not?
Yes, I'm here. I'm also using. Colin.
Go ahead. Do you have a, a comment or question regarding sixteen ninety New Britain Avenue?
I do. Uh, I'm the property manager for sixteen ninety New Britain Avenue. Uh, on behalf of the ownership, we are looking forward to this moving forward and having a growing relationship with Mott Corporation. And. Yeah, that's about it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate that. Okay, thank you very much, we appreciate that.
Okay, alright, that's it, okay.
I think there's, yeah, at this point, there are no other hands raised.
Okay, thank you. Uh Commissioners, before I close the public hearing, any last minute questions for the applicant? Okay, the public hearing is closed on this matter. And uh we need a motion and a second please.
Oh yeah, Patrick Carrier. I'd like to make a motion to approve the application by Mott Corporation. At sixteen ninety New Britain Avenue for special permit and site plan approval for change of use to manufacturing for portion of building.
Matt Hugnert, second.
Okay, everyone know what we're voting on? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions, alright, it's unanimous, so welcome, thank you very much, um. Welcome to New Britain Avenue.
Thank you, thank you very much for, for your help.
Absolutely, thank you, have a good evening, thank you.
You too.
Alright, CPD, that's not happening, do you wanna?
Uh correct, final announcement regarding the CPD application, it will not be heard tonight, that application was withdrawn. Um and so with that.
Yep. Alright, so um we're gonna handle uh the next two items individually. Uh but we did uh receive uh a comment that uh Patrick, you are recusing yourself from both?
Yes, Madam Chair, I will be.
Alright, this means that uh looking at the rotation, that Mike Walsh would be a voting member, you're good with that?
Sounds good.
Excellent, thank you. Alright, so the first one is our application from Town of Farmington, plan and zoning. It's for an amendment to the zoning regulations to adopt a moratorium on new multifamily residential developments in all zones.
I, yes, and Madam Chair, we're gonna do, it'll be a combined presentation, so we're, so the presentation for the amendment to the zoning regulations for. The moratorium to multifamily residential housing as well as the amendment to the zoning regulation to add Article One. Section five B, single-family residential housing moratorium. It'll be one presentation that covers both, um we're respectfully asking the commission, it'll be two separate votes, they are.
Okay.
There's a lot of overlap, but there are uh differences as well, plus the, the two.
Alright.
Um so. Uh I am Shannon Rutherford, the Town Planner, with me this evening is Garrett Deagle, the Assistant Town Planner, Garrett uh assisted. Um quite extensively on this and the presentation this evening, I'll. Take the lead and Garrett will be available as well for questions as we move through this evening. Um as we've noted, uh as, as the Chair has noted already, uh this will proceed just as it has with all the other public hearings. Uh except staff will be handling the presentation. And then it'll open it up to commission questions, staff will respond to any commission questions, and then we will open it up to public comment. And also public correspondence, we have received uh some public correspondence on this as well.
That works.
Okay. So. Uh we have the moratoriums to discuss, we will discuss the legality of the moratoriums, the general reasoning. The exemptions that are in place, the multifamily development language, the single-family development language, and then conclusions. The latest version of the zoning regulations for the Town of Farmington's been amended through August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Uh this amendment, proposed amendments are to that version of that recent version of the regulations.
Okay.
The legality of the moratoriums uh for Connecticut, the Connecticut general statutes uh allows for. Moratoriums in Connecticut and requires the enactment to take forth uh with the procedures used for the zone change applications. With a public hearing, as we're doing this evening with the appropriate notifications, as we've done this evening. The moratoriums must have a defined start and end date. And there must be limited to a reasonable timeframe. The justification should be for a specific reason and have a desired outcome. And it cannot prohibit all development within the municipality. Uh so the general reasoning for the moratorium, uh which is. To a large extent outlined in the uh top paragraph, the lead-in paragraph of each moratorium text. And the, the text was posted online and posted in the clerk's office, et cetera. Uh the basic premise is to allow both the commission and staff time to research and consider regulation changes to implement the town's affordable housing plan. And with that, there's a number of, of key steps that need to be considered uh by staff and the commission. And it will include a review of the objectives and strategies of the Affordable Housing Plan for the purpose of developing a priority list for us. It will, we will research and review efforts uh that include the review of inclusionary zoning regulations and fee and lieu programs of other Connecticut municipalities. Uh and we quite likely will reach further than Connecticut municipalities. Uh particularly with, with respect to the next bullet item with the review of pros and cons of inclusionary zoning and fee and lieu programs. So we can evaluate what works and what doesn't work and what other municipalities have experienced, not only here in Connecticut, but elsewhere. Uh we will consider changes to the accessory apartment regulation and consider options to introduce. Mixed use to other business zones to increase our opportunity for housing. And overall, these efforts will include a review of other zoning regulations, as I've noted, we'll review case studies. Um perhaps participate in workshops or have guest speakers into the commission uh to offer. Um just specific information to the commission and different points of view, so we can try to determine what's best for Farmington. So exemptions to the moratorium, basically what the moratorium is not. So the moratorium does not apply to building permits. This is not a building permit moratorium, this is a T P, Town Plan and Zoning, moratorium. So um as it states, a moratorium does not apply to building permits, it only applies to permits. That are under review by the Town Plan and Zoning Commission. Uh for single-family and multifamily projects. Therefore, any project that has already received approval from the commission is exempt. Any project that's already received its approval can proceed to building permit as it normally would. The moratoriums as they're written also have uh additional exemptions in place for both the multi and single-family text as it's proposed. And it offered a consideration that projects that have already received approval from the Farmington Conservation and Inland Wetlands Commission. Would be exempt from the moratorium and acknowledging that uh extensive work and. Uh effort has already gone in on uh owner or developer's part and they are basically halfway through the land use process at that point. Similarly, approvals for accessory apartments uh would be exempt from the moratorium. And approvals within the existable four-day affordable housing zones would be exempt. As uh background, we thought it would be helpful, uh Garrett pulled all this together for us. This is what's on the books recently, so there are other vacant lots in town, there are other developments that are not a hundred percent complete and built out. But over the last, say, three to five years, some of it even more recently than that. Uh these reflect the developments that have been approved by the Town Plan and Zoning uh. Uh Plan and Zoning Commission and uh reflect. The opportunity for new uh housing units. And again, these would, all of these developments would be exempt. Um because they've already either fully completed TPZ or have uh completed the inland wetlands process. So you can see from a multifamily standpoint, there is one thousand eighty-eight units. And from a single sta- uh family standpoint, there's uh seventy-two lots or seventy-two units, uh as all of these were single-family. So that, as it relates to our affordable housing plan. And percentage breakdowns. So the affordable housing plan that was approved and adopted in July of two thousand twenty-one. Uh use numbers in the two thousand ten census data. And they, these are the percentages that show in the approved affordable housing plan. Uh at the time, the two thousand twenty numbers weren't available when we finished and did the final adoption of the uh two thousand twenty-one Affordable Housing Plan. If we do just really, I'll say, basic math and we add. This multifamily, this single family um into. The total units and then pop this affordable into the affordable line, right? So this increased. These units increased based on the development on the previous slide and then the total affordable increase based on the development um at eighty South Road. The percentage drops to, it, it looks uh as shown here, just point two percent. It doesn't look overly significant when you think of point two percent, when you look at it as total housing units and we look at. Uh I'm gonna use round numbers, eleven thousand housing units and we ideally have a ten percent goal for affordable housing. Um that's the goal that's set in eight dash thirty G, certainly. There's advocates that, that should be a higher percentage, but the metric that we're charged with is the ten percent. So those eleven thousand housing units be um with the eight hundred and eighty-one affordable. We were shy of our ten percent by two hundred and twenty-nine, two hundred and thirty units. With this increase, right, our goal increased, our ten percent goal increased to then twelve thousand. Uh sorry, one thousand two hundred and twenty units is ten percent of the current units. We then uh are short that increase to two hundred and seventy-seven units that we are short. So that's a twenty percent, and just going from two thirty to the two seventy. Um is a twenty percent increase in the number of units that we are short uh in reaching that ten percent goal. I've done a whole bunch of other math, being the engineer that I am, I couldn't out myself, um if, if for whatever reason. Um you know, the sixty units that have been proposed at eighty South Road don't come to fruition. And this, this number stays at eight eighty-one, because again, those, those eighty, uh sorry, sixty units at eighty South Road. Are, are being put forth for chief of funding and it's an application process. If the developer has been clear, if he is not successful in securing the appropriate funding, then that development will sit until at such a point in time. Where that funding becomes available and he is successful in securing it. So if those sixty-two units come out, um but we still have. Right, we've, we still have all the other units on the books here. Um our delta then becomes. Um a, a fifty percent delta from the two hundred and thirty. To then it would be three, it'd be three hundred and thirty, almost a one hundred and ten unit difference uh increase, so we're. Again, continuing to lose ground. We took it further to take a look at building permits that have been issued since two thousand ten. Um so that this base number even changes and that changes to eleven thousand six hundred and sixty-seven units. Yeah, that's, that's, in addition, that's an additional. Six hundred units over and above what's here. So that number, we, we've lost ground again, so. Again, we can look at this math of a whole bunch of different ways, but the bottom line is. That this, this point two percent that shows on this slide is really more significant than just. Point two percent when you think of it as total housing units and being uh two hundred and seventy-seven units. Um so. I'll continue uh the moratorium on multifamily developments. And uh this is the full text, there's no changes to what had been proposed uh at this point in time, this is the text that was shared. With the commission and that has been posted. So this is for Article One, uh Section five A for the multifamily housing moratorium. And.
Thank you.
Um again, the intro paragraph is the same, um the. Purpose, the, the, the crux of it is the Plan and Zoning Commission hereby declares an immediate moratorium on all applications and approvals of multifamily. Residential housing in any zone and any special exceptions and special permits for multifamily housing. For purposes of this section, multifamily housing shall include two or more dwelling units within one building. But shall not prohibit the creation of a accessory apartment in an existing single-family home in accordance with Article Four, Section twenty-one. With the zoning regulations. Um and any housing units or general, general plans for housing that have already been approved prior to the effective date. Shall not be affected and the moratorium shall not apply to applications that already have the inland wetlands approval. And then there's the suggestions for the um, the moratorium expiring in one, one year from. Uh from now and that the effective date is one day after the publication of the approval. Um so that's the basis of that text, thank you, Garrett. Uh, single-family development, again, is, there's similarities, but we felt it prudent to, to break these out. Um the intro paragraph uh is the same, again, it talks about the, the need and the reason, the purpose behind it, which I already touched on in the. Uh few slides previously. The, the second paragraph of the text and the crux of this, the Plan and Zoning Commission hereby declares an immediate moratorium on all applications. For an approvals of residential housing. In any zone except the affordable housing zone, the housing opportunity zone and South Road opportunity zone, which creates three or more dwelling units or lots. And any special uh exceptions, special permit subdivisions or re-subdivisions. For any residential housing that creates three or more dwelling uh units or lots. Any housing units or general plans. For housing that have not already been approved prior to the effective date of this moratorium shall not be affected and the moratorium. Uh shall not apply to residential developments that already have received inland wetlands commission approval. And again, it then goes on to talk about uh uh effective dates and the expiration date and a twelve-month um effective period. So in conclusion. Uh there needs to be a specific time, requires enactment, sorry, requires an enactment with the procedures for the zone change, which we are currently doing. The moratoriums have a specific start and end date, so as I noted, the start date would be. Uh one day after the public notice um for this matter and then. Uh one year duration. Justification for the specific reasons and the desired outcome, which we outlined and cannot prohibit all development. So um with that, Madam Chair, if you're agreeable, I'd like to go right to the letters that we've received, if that's okay?
Thank you.
Certainly. So. We have letters. So we received a letter from Attorney uh Tim Hollister. This was shared with the commission in advance for the hearing and it is on the screen here for. Review um for everyone and it's given the nature of this, I normally don't read in the letters. Bear with me, folks, in this instance, I'm gonna read in the letters, um. So again, this is from Attorney Tim Hollister, I'm writing on behalf of the Connecticut Home Builders and Remodelers Association, do you wanna do this as I'm? I'm, I'm reading, thank you. Uh I'm writing on behalf of the Connecticut Home Builders and Remodelers Association, an organization that I periodically advise. Um about proposed statutes and regulations. I've been asked to comment on the commission's pending proposal for a one-year moratorium on applications for and approvals. Of multifamily and single-family. Of multifamily and single-family residential development. In summary, the proposed moratoria are not necessary and in the alternative are likely over, overbroad and for unreasonable duration. The legality of moratoria in Connecticut is discussed in Judge Robert Fuller's treatise. Connecticut Land Use Law and Practice, Section nineteen five. Uh, additions twenty eighteen and twenty twenty two supplement. Fuller first observes that General Statute, Section eight dash two, contains no language authorizing a moratorium, but acknowledges one court case. Arnold Bernard versus Westport Planning and Zoning Commission, one ninety four, Connecticut, one fifty two. And nineteen eighty four, that allowed a limited moratorium to proceed. Fuller cautions that a moratorium must be at least narrowly tailored to achieve a specific stated objective. Based on compelling reasons and for a short uh, time as, as the proposed regulation revision uh, revision requires. The stated scope of the moratoria proposed is for one year covering single-family and multifamily residential proposals. The stated justifications are to address the potential impact of re- recent legislation, address concerns about meeting the town's affordable. Housing goals and revise regulations to align with the town's recent affordable housing plan and previously adopted plan of conservation and development. It's presumed that the recent legis- legislation is public, is Public Act twenty one dash twenty uh, twenty nine, is twenty one dash twenty nine, excuse me. The commission should first recognize what a broad drastic step it is proposing, a townwide shutdown of new applications for residential development for one year. Amounting to a broad suspension of property rights. The commission should consider that Public Act twenty one twenty nine. And the town's recent affordable housing plan have little to do with single-family residential development. And therefore, it is hard to understand how recent legislation and what parts of the affordable housing plan. Justify a moratorium on single-family applications at a minimum, the commission should clarify. That lots uh, that it has already approved in its planning capacity are exempt from the proposal. As to multifamily development, we would point out that Public Act twenty one twenty nine generally does not address multifamily development standards. Such as density setbacks and pervious coverage, et cetera. To the contrary, it targets exclusionary pa- practices. Moreover, any regulatory goal with respect to affordable housing could be addressed through discussion with an applicant or. Possibly conditions of approval while the commission conducts parallel effort to address amended regulations. Another concern is that moratoria, which have been rare in Connecticut, are more likely to be productive in legal if commission. First devises a list of the type of regulatory changes it intends to consider rather than simply imposing the moratoria based on. An unexplained and open-ended intent to explore potential revisions. Starting with devising a list of specific changes to be considered will allow the commission, property owners and public to better specify. And understand what application types should be suspended and for how long. The commission should also bear in mind, the applications made in compliance with General Statute eight dash thirty cannot be subject to the moratorium. Because eight dash thirty is a remedial statute. The final element is duration, one-year moratorium should not be adopted without specific proposal and work plan and schedule justifying the extended timeframe. Not spelling out the particulars now would seem to be a recipe for needing to extend the moratorium one year from now. In summary, these proposals are drastic step and questionable legality as presently formulated. Respectfully, the commission should carefully review the necessity, the scope, the specifics and revision. Uh, timeframe and impact on property rights before proceeding. Thank you, Tim Hollister. Um, the next one we have. We received uh, written correspondence from. Desegregate, Connecticut. Uh, this came in today, it was shared with the commission, I don't know if we had an opportunity to get it posted on the website. Do you know? Okay, so this one may not have been posted, uh, but it did, it was shared with the commission, this came in from Desegregate, Connecticut. Um, and likewise, I am gonna go ahead and read that into the record. And then I have a response from Attorney DeCrescenzo that I'm gonna read into the record. Um. So, I am writing on behalf of Desegregate, Connecticut, a pro homes coalition of eighty nonprofit neighborhood groups. Committed to seeing a more prosperous, equitable and sustainable state by advocating for smart land use policies at the local and state level. And writing to you regarding the commission's proposed residential moratoria. In short, the pending proposal is misguided and we strongly recommend you do not pursue it further. Before I share some of our legal concerns, I want to start by sharing our economic concerns. As you no doubt know, Connecticut is in the midst of unprecedented, unprecedented housing crisis. Where nearly half of homeowners and half of home renters are paying more than thirty percent of their monthly income towards housing. Which the federal government considers to be too much, according to our zoning atlas in Farmington, thirty one point one percent of residents. Are already living with housing cost burdens, this is having a disastrous impact on. Growing our economy as a state and growing the tax base in Farmington as a town. Instituting a moratorium regardless of the dubious legal standing. Would make these issues even worse. It would be very difficult for businesses to attract routine workers, for seniors to remain in the community and for young people to move or return to town. Having grown up next door in Avon, I can personally attest to my interest. In potentially buying a home in the valley in the near future and would love to have more options in Farmington, particularly in Unionville. Where so many things are walkable. This moratorium would make that harder for me and my family to envision this option. There are good faith concerns that communities may have over housing growth, traffic, infrastructure, public services. These are all impacted, but as our research has shown, all of these issues are actually positively impacted by encouraging smart zoning reforms. Particularly around gentle, gentle density near public transportation. We have a proposal coming out in two thousand and twenty three C T General Assembly called Work, Live, Ride. That we think addresses these concerns and gives communities like Farmington the chance to plan for growth responsible, growth responsibility. And help uh, with help from the state. We hope to brief this body on the proposal soon, but to simply freeze growth in Farmington would make all these problems worse in the short term. And certainly worse in the long term. Turning now to our legal concerns, we echo what others have said. Judge Robert Fuller discusses the legality of moratoria in Connecticut in his treatise. Connecticut Land Use Law and Practice, Section one uh, nineteen five, twenty eighteen, uh, twenty twenty two supplement. Judge Fuller states that the CGS Section two, uh, eight dash two does not contain language that authorizes moratoria. But acknowledges that one Connecticut court case upheld a limited moratorium. However, Fuller cautions that moratoria must be narrow, narrowly tailored to achieve specific and stated objective based on compelling reasons. Now for a shorter time period as the proposed regulation uh, revisions requires. Based on Judge Fuller's guidance, the legality of the proposed moratoria is questionable at best. Its stated scope is for one year and covers single-family and multifamily residential development proposals. The stated justifications are to address the potential impact of recent legislation, to address concerns about the meeting. Uh, the town's affordable housing goals and to revise regulations to align with the town's recent affordable housing plan and previously adopted P O C D. These justifications are narrowly tailored and not specific enough to meet the guidance set forth by Judge Fuller. If the town wants to meet affordable housing goals, it can do so by discussing these goals with applicants and can make those goals part of conditions of approval. Also, the town has not even devised a list of specific regulatory changes that it intends to make to further its goals. Additionally, a one-year moratorium should not be adopted without specific proposal and schedules to justify this long a timeframe. This lack of clarity may lead the town to needing to extend this moratorium later down the line if it does not meet its goals. For all the above reasons, the legality of the proposed moratorium is questionable at best and should not be pursued further. We hope that you strongly reconsider the proposal and take this uh, take this as an opportunity to work with groups like Desegregate, Connecticut. On helping Farmington plan responsible growth. We hope that we do not have to take further action to present this and look forward to a positive relationship with you. Moving forward, respectfully yours, Pete Harrison. Go ahead, open up the. So the final letter that I would like to share this evening, um. Obviously, the letter that came in from Desegregate, Connecticut just arrived today, uh, Attorney Hollister. Uh, was considered enough, he uh, shared his letter with us last week. It gave us the opportunity to seek legal counsel with our town attorney. That uh, counsels us on our land use matters uh, from, that's Robert DeCrescenzo from Uptight Kelly. And Attorney DeCrescenzo responds. You have asked me to respond to the letter to the Town Plan and Zoning Commission received from Attorney Tim Hollister on behalf of the Connecticut Home Builders Association. The following are my comments addressing the issues raised by Mr. Hollister. Legality of the moratoria. The Connecticut Supreme Court has recognized that the zoning commission has the implied authority under Connecticut General Statute. Section eight dash two to adopt a limited temporary zoning regulation that imposes a short-term moratorium on particular uses. Uh, Arnold Bernard versus Westport Planning and Zoning Commission, one ninety four, Connecticut, one fifty two, nineteen eighty four. The key factors in determining the validity of a zoning moratoria are the limited duration and narrow scope of the purpose of the moratorium. In my opinion, the scope of the moratorium is reasonable given the stated purpose. Part two, the duration of the moratoria. The pro- proposed duration of the moratoria is one year. To be valid, moratoria need to be limited in duration based on the stated purpose of the moratoria. Here, the stated purpose of the moratoria is to allow the commission the time necessary to adopt regulations to implement the town's affordable housing plan. Given the potential complexity of the regulation changes that may be necessary to implement the plan, a one-year moratoria is reasonable. In the alternative, the commission can shorten the duration to six months with an option to extend, extend it if the work is ongoing. And it is signed Robert DeCrescenzo. Um, the only thing I have to add to the letters received from Attorney uh. Hollister and the Desegregate, Connecticut, there's comments made about. Uh, us perhaps working with applicants um, and uh. An applicant, whether multifamily or a single family, that is seeking to look at. Uh, a development and being able to perhaps impose conditions on them um. Our regulations don't permit that, so you, we can't, i- if, you know, certainly at pre-application meetings, we can suggest this to the commission. The, the applicant that we may be interested in having uh, affordable housing as part of. An application and integrated into, but in the absence of having a regulation that requires that. The, the commission uh, and staff have no authority to require that from um, from an applicant. So, um, I think with that, that concludes my presentation. It rec- concludes the written correspondence that we have received on this matter uh, state. So I will, okay, uh, open it up to questions.
Thank you for uh, putting the information together, the details, highlighting the thousand plus units that are already on the books um. And I guess, uh, let's get through the questions and um, see where it takes us. So, uh, Mike Rabulis, questions for town staff?
Um, thank you for putting those percentages together, I was kind of curious, I thought they would have uh. The percentage change would have dropped a lot more, but I think that just uh, shows how much. How many more units you need for affordable housing to get to that ten percent. Um, I think I already know the answer to this, but the site plan changes for any of these approved. Developments already. They can do that, they can change a site plan?
Yes, if there's, i- if they're not changing quantity of units, yes. If it's a site plan change for stormwater or something else, um, yes, they would go through as a minor modification. Or either even under planner's report, as we, as we have typically uh, handled those, yes.
Okay. Um. I, I saw in here that it said, you know, you didn't expect this to go the, the full, the full year.
Correct.
With, with the six months, with a possible extension at the end of six months, is that something you guys would be okay with?
Absolutely.
Okay. Um, thank you for putting this together, um, we certainly have had a lot of uh, approvals in the past. Four or five years that I've been doing this, so it was uh, thank you for explaining this all and, and the purpose of it, I don't have anything further.
Thank you, Mike, thank you. Scott?
Yeah, again, Shannon, thank you and, and the staff there for the presentation. I guess I just want to understand the duration, so it's, it's set at twelve months right now. That's flexible, so we could decide when we've made progress that we could end it, like, how does that work? I'm just trying to think through, or do we need to sort of set something now, sort of like what Mike was talking about?
So, so as part of the moratorium, uh, legally, the start and end date have to be specified. So that has to be outlined um, in the, as part of the text, as it's shown. In the drafts that were, were shared with everyone, right? So that the moratorium expires and the text amendment takes effective, uh, the effective date. Um. The moratorium, if it is to be extended, because even here with the twelve, twelve months. It says unless extended by the Town Plan and Zoning Commission, so we would have to come back to you. Um, and, and at, at that point, we are integrally going to be part of, there, there's a lot of work for, for all of us to do. There's gonna be a lot of reading and a lot of looking at things and trying to decide what changes are most appropriate for Farmington. Um, so, ye- yes, the. It's not arbitrary, i- i- the point is to, to make sure that it's um. It gives us room enough to try to work through the research and, and the formulation end of some regulations. Kind of, for me, let it simmer just a smidge so that we can make sure there isn't unintentional consequences. And then take action on any proposed regulation. Um, so there's steps for that uh, as we move through, plus continuing to process. You know, commercial applications and other things that, that, you know, it's not that everything is gonna come to a halt for the, the commission. So, the six months, i- again, we can set it for six months. And then if we get to the, you know, June and we're making good progress. And the commission says, okay, I think we need just a little more time to get this finished up. Then, then we can, the commission can grant that extension. Um, I'd have to confer with Attorney DeCrescenzo honestly to know whether or not that extension needs to be uh, take place at a public hearing. Or if it can be done uh, organically under new business. Um, so I'm not sure for the extension, uh, if it's a public, another public hearing or not. It doesn't really matter in the whole scheme of things, uh, other than making sure that we track it appropriately for the appropriate notifications and timing. So, um. E- either, either is fine, um, and I think either gets us to where we need to be. Um, and the six months perhaps puts a, a little more heat on everybody for focus and progress forward. E- e- either way, I think uh, it accomplishes what we need to, again, with um, for us, the way our commission is made up. Um, I'll be, I'll be quite candid, um, I did not intend for this to go twelve months with um. Everyone, uh, half the commission being up for election in, in November and election season really starting in uh, October first. Uh, really doesn't seem prudent to have this run into that. So I think we're either, we either are knowingly making progress or we're not.
Yeah.
Um, and so, yes, the, we can lift the moratorium if we get to a point where we have a regulation that's ready. To be implemented, the new regulation, then we'll have a public hearing, just like we're doing this evening. That new regulation or, or regulation changes, I made note of perhaps tweaking the accessory apartment regulation. Or some of the business regulations to allow multi uh, mixed-use development. Where perhaps we hadn't considered it before. Um, so it might be a series of, of multiple modifications to the regulation. When we're finished, we can lift the moratorium and, and, and it's, it ceas- ceases to exist then at that point. Um, so either way, either way works.
Thanks for explaining that, Shannon, that helps. So I guess the other question I have is. We're looking at this in consideration of affordable housing, does that? When we start the work, if this is approved and we start the work on it, does it, does it limit us in what we can look at in the regulations? Does it limit us in what we can look at in the regulations? I guess in my mind, and I'll I'll be candid for my opinion. We've, I feel like we've become a commission that's doing a lot of zoning and not a lot of planning. And. I guess I'm just trying to get a sense of what latitude we would have to look at the regulations, and I agree, like you said, we. We've had no time to get to it because we've had so much. Sort of coming through the pipeline. I don't know if you had any thoughts on that?
Um. It. I get. No, it doesn't limit us. However, I guess with the caveat that. The the purpose of this, the particular moratorium is to try to. Make adjustments to the regulations to. Get us closer to meeting the objectives and goals of the Affordable Housing Plan. So to the extent that there's a connection there. Then, yes, I think it's it it it's valid. So that's for me, the mixed use development, but in the business zone. Right? It's not in a residential zone, but it is. It's touching housing from a mixed use. Standpoint. So. Yes, but I, you know, I don't think it's appropriate for us to be using this planning time to. Revamp the so the sign regulation. Or revamp parking regulations, right? It it needs to. In my mind, directly touch to. How how does this? Touch on one of the objectives and strategies. That were set out in the Affordable Housing Plan. In some way. I think it's important that we try to, otherwise, this can get really unwieldy, right? This it's already kind of a big, this is a big thing to to look at, and we need to pretty quickly start to. Narrow down how we think we want to tackle this.
Okay, thanks, Shannon. I'm all set for now. Thank you.
Okay, great questions. Thank you. Matt?
Hey, hey, thanks. Thanks, Shannon, and and I appreciate that. And I see Garrett and Sandy in the room. Thanks for your work, as well as Bruce. Who I see on the call. So so my first question, Shannon, you already sort of answered, but just just to be safe, right? I think it's fair to say that. Nothing in our regulations allows us to add. An affordable housing condition to applications for. Housing, single-family or multifamily developments. Is that fair to say?
Cor- correct. We cannot. A- a- any, whether it's a multifamily or a single-family housing development, we cannot insist that. The the way the regulation is structured now, we cannot insist that. Even five, five percent, let alone ten, fifteen or twenty percent.
Now, that makes sense. And and if you don't mind, can you go to the? I think it's a yellow chart with the units that are in queue. I was gonna do a little bit of a math question for you, right? We have. Over one thousand units, right? Thousand eighty-eight multifamily and seventy-two single-family. Sort of in the queue that can can be built as of today, right?
Yes, sir.
So how many of, I was curious, that divided by, right, the grand total number of units that exist in Farmington? I think is around. Ten percent or nine percent, right? So if you go to the next page for me.
Cur- roughly, yes, because the the census has a, the the twenty ten census has eleven thousand one hundred and six. And that's what was. In the affordable, correct.
Got it. So yeah, so there's still, we could grow the number of units in our town by ten percent. Which has gotten approved today, right? Is that, does that?
So that's what's showing. So if we were to add. Add those units, that's what this future column is, is taking taking the market rate units and adding them here. And then taking sixty-two affordable units and adding them here. Correct.
Okay, all right, that makes sense.
Yep.
And my last one. I was curious.
May I piggyback on that statement? So there's, I guess to that to that point. Is that there are plenty. There's there's plenty of of existing development opportunity now granted or housing opportunity. In the queue. Right? I I I'm hard pressed to think in six months to a year, we will. Exhaust this housing opportunity that's in the queue. Some of them are struggle for a variety of reasons. They're struggling to get shovels in the ground. But even with that, when we looked at the twenty twenty census. There's a vacancy of, we'll say roughly five hundred units of housing, whether that's. A single, most likely single-family that hasn't has yet to be developed or multifamily that was yet to be developed. So. That opportunity exists organically. So so I I interrupted your, I wanted to touch on that since we were right there with that number, so. You're interrupting.
No, no, I appreciate you interrupting. That makes sense. And and again. One thousand eighty-eight multifamily and seventy-three single-family where we weren't allowed to add any conditions around affordable housing. Okay. Just my last one on on sort of surrounding towns. I was curious if you had any. Percentages of Avon or Burlington or Can- in their versus Farmington.
Where they are on affordable housing rates? Is that your your question? My my loose understanding is our neighboring towns are notably lower than Farmington. I want to say for the most part, five percent or less for those surrounding communities, and I'm using that loosely. There are a variety of published charts. I don't have that all at my fingertips at the moment.
Okay, got it. And and again, I think this, just to ask this one again, right, like. It sounds like the goal of the moratorium is. We really need the time to study this and do it in a thoughtful way. Because if not. We have no recourse when these new applications come in. That.
Correct.
Said, yep.
Correct.
Great.
You all said, okay, thank you. Liz?
Uh, yes, I I will echo everyone else's thanks for a very thorough and. Detailed presentation. I appreciate all the information in it. Uh, one question. What is the history of the use of moratorium? Have we have we used it in the past? In in an effort to kind of get a handle on things? I'm just curious about that.
Uh, Farmington has in different ways. So they've used it for. Cannabis restriction and marijuana restriction at one point. We actually had the reverse. Bill Warner back in two thousand sixteen. Did the research and math required to. Actually garner an affordable housing moratorium. And that's an application that submitted to the state. Documenting where Farmington is from an affordable housing percentage. Compared to its neighboring communities. And all of that, the the requirements for an affordable housing moratorium are are broken down in that. Eight dash thirty section of the Connecticut General Statutes. And that was, he was successful with that. So we had an affordable housing moratorium in Farmington from. Uh, I would say roughly June twenty sixteen to June twenty twenty. I'm not aware of other moratoriums that Farmington has embarked on. There are other communities. We actually, when we looked at this, there's a number of communities that have. Cannabis moratoriums in place or are looking at that. South Windsor. The whole reason, there's there's a few things that precipitated this, obviously, and then we looked and South Windsor had done a residential. Moratorium. Almost a year ago, so their their moratorium is due to expire, I believe, in March, roughly March twenty twenty-three. So. It is a tool. That is utilized. By commissions when necessary. For a variety of reasons, and generally it's to. To try to get the appropriate research done so appropriate. The correct measures for the municipality can be put in place.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it is a it is a useful tool, and I'm I'm glad we're, if if it fits, which I think it does. I think it's a a useful tool to use. I agree, we have, we do have a lot of things in the pipeline, so. I agree with a lot of things that have been said tonight.
Thank you, Liz. Thank you. All right, Mike?
No questions. I like what everyone said, and like I said earlier, appreciate all that effort pulling it together.
Thank you. How about you, James?
Yeah, echoing what everybody has said about the time and the efforts that you guys have put in. Thank you very much. My one question I have is just what is right here up on the screen municipalities that do not have ten percent of housing units deemed affordable? Are subject to affordable housing appeals through CGS eight thirty G. What does that look like? And. Yeah, just walk me through that process. And has it been, have have there been appeals to other towns that are also not hitting the ten percent number?
You want to jump in? You're you're, okay, you're.
Yes, so essentially, the way the Connecticut General Statute eight dash thirty G, which is referred to as the Affordable Housing Statute. Functions is that a developer. Applying through that statute. Does not necessarily have to abide by the zoning regulations of the subject municipality if the municipality does not meet that ten percent. There's very strict guidelines for when the commission can deny an application. It's they're usually health and safety concerns. And it does happen. I don't believe Farmington has had any recent. Eight dash thirty G applications. I know Newington had one a couple of years ago that they denied, and that went to court. And it it does happen, and as we said, it's any municipality that does not have ten percent of affordable housing. Is subject to that appeals process. And it would just be a standard, it's there's no site plan, it's only site plan, I'm sorry, there's no special permit. Public hearing as you would normally have, it really limits the commission's purview and reviewing these applications under that appeal.
So I'm gonna just piggyback on that and. We got, I'll say we were. Spoiled perhaps a smidge, so when eight eighty South Road came through. With Attorney Hollister and. Jeff Sager and his daughter Phoebe, so this, the sixty-two units on South Road next to. The fire station, so you might recall that we looked at that just a few months ago. That technically was an eight dash thirty G application. However. Mr. Sager chooses to handle. His affordable housing applications. Differently than perhaps some under other developers will choose to to do so, and he chooses to take. A quote unquote friendly approach. In that. He he does not want to take an adversarial, you're getting what you get. The way I want it. Period, the end. And use eight dash thirty G as a mechanism for forcing that. So it looks different for us when it came through, right? It didn't have an adversarial tone. To it, and they don't always have to have an adversarial tone. But. At times it can. And you you, the eight dash thirty G would allow a developer to come in. On any track of land, and it it could have been a different developer at that location. That perhaps. Didn't agree that, you know, with our concerns with respect to how to manage the. Some of the stormwater or some of the density, right? And not so much the stormwater management, but the density that goes with it. Or the parking requirement that that we feel is prudent for that. So it allows them. More latitude to push those thresholds. Or even the aesthetic appeal. Of the buildings and having them fit into the character of the neighborhood. There's more, there's limits as to what the. TPZ can require and insist on. And if the application is denied. The burden of proof when it goes to court. Falls to the TPZ. To demonstrate that burden of proof. That we were right in the denial. And I'm using very loose terms with us. Normally with a denial, the applicant appeals, and it's the applicant's burden of proof to demonstrate that the commission has made an error. In its proceedings. This flips it around, so the applicant can issue the the appeal. But the burden of proof falls back on TPZ. For demonstrating that there is a health and safety concern, as Garrett mentioned. So we we've had one, but it looks a little, it it looks different when it came through because of the nature of of how it was presented to us.
Yeah, I remember the a little portion of that conversation with Mr. Sager. A few we, a few months ago, so I was I was curious about town liability, TPZ liability for for these types of appeals. And in the in that type of a, that type of questioning, so. And also with regards to the the timing, I think. I think, you know, having it set at the at the year with the possibility for extending beyond a year. If there was. Rather, instead of doing that, maybe we set it at the six months with the possibility to extend, but maybe not go beyond. That year and kind of give us that that hard stop. Might be a little bit more palatable to the public. I'm just throwing that out there as a as a possibility. You know, and I I know it's a lot of work on your part. It's gonna be a lot of work on our part, and I'm not afraid of that, but. At the same time. You know, just trying to balance, you know, what's coming in from from the public and from the attorneys and. You know, the needs of the town and things like that.
Certainly. Thank you.
You're welcome. All set.
Thank you, James, and Matt?
Yeah, I just have one major question regarding, obviously, the six months is a preferred timeframe with that extending. As an option. But as James was saying, it is a lot of work. Will will that be composed of working groups, outside stakeholders? How would that look? In terms of. Collaboration?
So, yes, I already have, I already have a webinar and documentation that's ready to send off to you folks. It's a webinar I had an opportunity to sit in on last week. That I think has a lot of good information. I do intend to. Garrett has already done research on. Inclusionary Zone and Fee-in-Lu of programs that are here in the state of Connecticut. So those can all start to, we can start pushing that out to you folks to start to review. And then, yes, I've spoken to, as I'm sure it's no surprise, I've had a few developers call me. Once this has been made public, but. They also understand, like, we've had open conversations about it, productive conversations, and a willingness to come in and be either part of a panel discussion. And discuss, you know, once I think we've had an opportunity to review some of these other zoning regulations. As well as the webinar information that I have from last week, and we'll do further research to see what else. I think then that starts to give us a platform to have a panel discussion with a few individuals. And or have a a guest speaker, a professional speaker in from a housing standpoint. To, and I think it's important to try to get different point of views on this as well. And then we need to start to peel away again. Back to what makes the most sense for Farmington. Right? It's not necessarily what a neighboring community does. So I think it's a mix of that, Matt. It's it's some some research, it's getting some base understanding for everybody. So that we can. You know, have a guest speaker in or have a panel discussion. And be able to do that from the same basis of knowledge. You know, and I can let them know what the documents that I've already shared with all of you, so that. We're starting, everybody's starting from the same baseline.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioners. Great questions, right? Wow, thank you. So, you know. That's the thing that's hard to. Probably for the general public to think about is, this has nothing to do with building and building permits. We're talking about housing applications. I. I'm not worried, but I'm not sure if six months is enough to review and come up with the how. Um, it sounds like commissioners are leaning towards six months within a possible extension. Um, I feel that we should make it a year or ten months. Uh, because it is a lot of work. We have nineteen meetings left. I was counting. Nineteen meetings left this year. Um. I'm, I'm not a big numbers person, you know, I get the ten percent, obviously. Um, you know, for me, affordable housing is about building communities, the town we want to live in, we are all active officials. But the numbers are definitely alarming and they're going the other way. Um, so I think that, uh. We definitely need to pause and I think we need to think it through and do it right for our town, for each other. Um. I don't have any questions, uh, specific to one or the other. I have like a minor comment and. I'm gonna ask you this, Shannon, what do you think? The language isn't here, it's in bold. Write what it is, multifamily or single family, but you know, the portion that talks about the three or more. Is there any way to bold that? Or you don't think it's necessary? I mean, the language is there, so.
We can, for B.
Yeah, so the second pair, I mean, the document is not that long, you know, but you know what happens? We don't read the entire thing.
Yeah, we certainly can within a, in the zoning, I mean, the zoning regulations, it's a word document, right? So we absolutely can. Um, so for any, any residential housing that creates three or more dwelling units or lots.
Yes, that, that, I, I know it's silly, but your eye is gonna go there and I, I don't know if it's gonna solve. Us not reading, but.
Yeah, that's all right.
Um, that was the only suggestion I had, but, um.
Look, there's four of us in our department. We have to reread it all the time. So, it's okay.
And, uh, seriously, great questions from the, uh, commissioners, um. There was a lot of information obviously to get through for today's meeting and, uh, thank you. All right, so this is a public hearing. Um, let's see if anyone is still with us.
Oh, I got a feeling. We've got, we've got a few friends online. Again, if anyone has called in to offer comments on the moratorium, we're taking comments on both items five. And six for the purpose of public comment. Um, a single family moratorium as well as the multifamily moratorium. Um, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. You will be addressed, uh, you were called on to address the commission. Um, and then we typically, we will continue this how we normally do. We'll let all the comments come in. And then I will respond to comments after unless there's some overriding reason to address a comment immediately.
That works.
Okay, so with that, um, we have Ed Gilardi. If you would like to unmute your microphone and address the commission regarding, uh, the moratorium.
Yes, uh, I live in, uh, Wood and Shipsoak Lane, which is close to the, uh, Maria Road project. And I, I find it to be unacceptable that, uh, they get an exemption because of the inland water commission study. Why? Because I listened to the Waterland Commission Committee meeting and. All that was presented was an expert witness from the, uh, Carrier Corporation. There was no kind of balance for anybody. To, uh, present a counter. Statement about the proposed plans, like doing the twenty-five foot extra or changing the variance from the, uh. Waterland levels of twenty, I think it's the usual limit is fifty feet and want to make it down to twenty-five feet. And, and there's no expert witness to counterbalance that. So all you got was the, uh, perfect plan. That's in favor by the, uh, and paid for by the person who wants to do the project. A- and there's no counterbalance that's gonna. Present aside either for the town or for any people in the neighborhood. A- and to give them an exemption, of course, they have the, uh, wetland permit already approved. I, I don't, and I don't see that as being a real basis for them being approved. Right now, the, the, uh, Carrier Corporation has not broken ground over there. It's right across the street from where I live and I don't, I don't see any, uh, trucks going in or any ground being broken. Maybe they're waiting for the springtime or something, but the developer didn't even start to break ground to shovel yet. I, I don't think it should be on the exemption list for the moratorium. And I think should be more studies done and I'm with the neighborhood group now and we're trying to get a civil engineer to do a report to present to. The Town Planning Commission to show some of the weaknesses of their proposal. But it's not ready yet, but, uh, to be on the exemption list, I, I just found the procedure from the wetlands. Commission to be weak and poor. That's all I wrote, we all wanna say, and I, I don't think, uh, the Maria Road should be on the exemption list. That's all I have to say at this time. Thank you.
Thank you for calling in.
Okay, if anyone else has called in to offer comment regarding the moratorium. Um, either document, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom and you will be called on to address the commission. Okay, I'm gonna try. We've had quite a few people on, so I just want to make sure everyone, if, if you're having trouble with the raise your hand feature. You know, you can try the chat. We typically don't take comment via chat. I want to make sure. Anyone that intended to offer comment has the opportunity to do so this evening. Again, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom to address the commission if you have a comment regarding the moratorium applications that we just finished discussing. Or if you're having issues, then please use the feature, the chat feature. Um, I'm trying to chair, there are no other hands raised.
So, Maria, right, it has not come in front of our commission yet. Uh, it went through.
Correct. Would you, would you like me to speak to that? Sure, okay. So, um. There, in, in reviewing the moratorium and the text for the moratorium. Town staff took a look to try to determine, I'll say, what is, uh, fair and reasonable. And there is an exemption i- in place for the moratorium, to be clear, so that i- it, this. It's not an exemption from permitting with TPZ. It's an exemption from the, the pause that we're taking with the moratorium. Understanding that a developer that has already gone to the expense of. Survey site plans, drainage reports, et cetera, to get through wetlands. Would then now get caught in limbo, even though they've already started that design process. As opposed to someone who has not started that, and while they may not enjoy this pause. Uh, that we are proposing, they haven't, um. Put forth the same capital that somebody who has already started the land use process. It is not limited to the Maria Road project. There's a project on Red Oak Hill. There's also a project on Talcat Notch. Um, and those were just three off the top of our head that Mr. Seer and I were able to. Ascertain when we looked at this and thought, okay, um. One, we wanted to make sure we weren't doing it for any one project in particular. It does cover multiple projects, again, just three that we found at the top, uh, looking through, but nonetheless. Um. We felt that it was reasonable that, you know, design expenses have been put forth, the land use process has been started. Um, in a, an owner or developer that has started that land use process. Should be entitled to complete that land use process with TPZ. And in looking at it again for what we are trying to account, why we are putting forth the moratorium. The. That exemption. For, based on the research we did and our understanding of the, the developments that would qualify. Does not have a notable impact to what. The commission and the moratorium are trying to accomplish one way or the other. So. So that's the reason why it was done and it, to be clear, does not exempt them from the TPZ process. So the TPZ, those, those. Developers or owners still have to come through TPZ for. A subdivision or special permit hearing and or a special permit hearing and site plan review. Um, to be clear, it's simply, um, an exemption from the moratorium, allowing them to come forth during this. Six-month or one-year timeframe where we are pausing. Other residential developments. And so if anybody has any follow-up question on that, I'm happy to address it.
Can you check one more time before we?
Yeah, absolutely. I can check one more time. If anyone has called in to offer. Comment, uh, in favor or in opposition or have a question. Uh, regarding the presentation on the moratorium, uh, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. You will be acknowledged to address the commission.
Okay, and, uh, commissioners, do you have any questions for town staff before I close the public hearing? And we'll definitely do a discussion and let everyone, um, do their thing. But, all right, at this point, uh, the public. Hearing on, uh, the housing moratorium. Um, amendment is closed. So before we get to the discussion portion, I will need a motion and a second.
And I am going to just, please, we're, I do want to take these, uh, individually.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do, please.
And, uh, the presenting, we present, the presentation was for twelve months, right? And we can discuss.
Uh, the presentation was for twelve, but the individual putting forth the, um. Uh, the motion can modify that as part of the motion and simply say, you know, as presented, except. Whatever timeframe you're looking for, um. Or any other, if there's any other adjustment that you felt necessary, so.
Okay. So, um.
And a reminder, Mike Walsh is the, uh, voting member.
Yes, he is. All right, so again, uh, item number five. Uh, item number five is the multifamily portion. We need a motion and a second, please. And then we'll do a discussion.
Yeah, remember Patrick's not here to read the first one, right?
Correct.
Are you volunteering? Well, no, you can't. You're, you're not, sorry, James. I thought you were volunteering.
Hey, this is Matt Hutt Wagner. I make a motion to approve the application. For amendment from the town of Farmington for application for amendment to the zoning regulations. To adopt a moratorium, a new multifamily residential developments in all zones as presented.
Liz Sanford, I second.
Okay, discussion. Um, we'll just go through the, Rocco, Mike, G.
Um, well, while I, I completely agree, this is certainly a lot of work for, uh, for town staff. Um, you know, if they're agreeable to six months, I, I see no reason why we, uh. Why we couldn't do that. Um, that would be my only change to that. This will be a, uh, six-month moratorium. With the, uh, option for an extension at six months.
Okay, thank you. Scott?
Yeah, I, I agree with Mike. Actually, on the, the six months, I think if we have the opportunity to extend in what. Shannon added with, um, I forgot there's a little election season coming up towards the end of this year. Um, it's gonna take a lot of folks' time that that may. Quote-unquote light a fighter, fire under us a little bit to get this done as quickly as we can too. So I know it's a lot of work, but. Um, I'm up for it as well, so I would, I would encourage us to look at six months.
Okay, all right. Uh, no concerns with the regulation, though?
No.
Okay, uh, Matt, H?
Yeah, hi, thanks. Um, no, I have no issues with, with the, again, the moratorium. I think we need a sort of thoughtful process here and I think. This pause will allow us to do that. I'm certainly open to, uh, to the work here and, you know, I understand the concerns from. From the developer community, but, you know, I think this commission tries to do what's best for Farmington and, and I think affordability is a big issue going on. So I think this pause allows us to do that. Um, I am open to six months. I, I just made the motion generic because I was curious where the other commissioners stand, but. Six months gets us through sort of that end of July before the August where we have no meetings, so. I mean, maybe that just kind of nicely fits in, um, as well. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. And Liz?
Uh, I agree with the moratorium. I, I think it is, uh, well thought out and I think it will. Provide us as a, as a board and as a, uh, community members to look at what's the next big step. For Farmington and do it thoughtfully, do it in more of a deliberative process as opposed to chasing our tails around. And, uh, I am also up for, I'm, uh, available. I, I think six months would be. A good amount of time. I'm, I'm open for that also.
Thank you. And, uh, Mike Walsh?
Uh, I am in agreement, but I do think six months the way to go. So six months is what I'd like to see.
All right, um, I too agree, um, the pause, we need the pause. Um, the pause is not violating property owner rights. Uh, we need to, uh, think about our town, right? And the impact. Um. I hope we get done what we want to get done, need to get done in six months. It is a lot. Um, but with the option to extend, I'm okay with the six month. So we need to modify that motion?
Uh, we do. So Matt could modify and then Liz second the modification and then we can.
Take a vote, yeah.
Do, uh, all right, so can I, do you want me to just restate or should I just say?
We stay with the six month with options.
So I'd like to restate my ma- uh, my motion to approve the application from the town of Farmington. For amendment to the zoning regulations to adopt a moratorium, a new multifamily residential developments in all zones. Except change the timeframe to six mo- months versus twelve months.
Okay, with the option for the six-month extension or no?
Well, I, well, just a question on that. Yeah, sure, with the option for. Yeah, because we would just have to vote on it again anyway, right?
Cor- correct.
Does that? So, uh, uh, can I, let me just ask a question to be clear.
Yeah.
So if I, if we don't add the option, do we have to do another public hearing in six months? Or if I add the option now, does that exempt us from a public hearing in six months?
I don't know.
Yeah, I would put the option to extend in, so at least it's in there, but, uh.
All right, let me start over. All right, but I'll make a motion to approve, approve the application from the town of Farmington. For amendment to the zoning regulations to adopt a moratorium, a new single-family re- uh, uh, application for amendment. To zoning regulations to adopt a moratorium, a new multifamily residential developments in all zones. Except change the timeframe from six months to twelve months with the option at the end of six months for another six months.
I think.
I think you said six months to twelve months, Matt.
You did. You were so close, Matt.
We're close.
I'm sorry.
I think it's been a long.
I'm sorry. I know, this is getting a little more convoluted than necessary, but you can, so. You can just, if. amend your original motion just to change the timeframes and I don't think it's necess- I think we've got definitely clear on the record that the intent is. That it's approving and you can just modify that timeframe specifically just to say what you want.
All right, I'm gonna modify my initial, I appreciate everyone's patience here. I modify my initial motion to change the timeframe from twelve months to six months. With an option for an additional six months.
Thank you.
Thank you. Liz?
And yes, I second that again.
All right. All right, everyone know what we're voting on. All right, uh, do you want one by one for the record? Does it matter?
I don't.
Doesn't matter, so, all right, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. All right, unanimous on the multifamily component. All right, the next item is the. Single family, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm there, I'm, I'm in there. Uh, whi- which is the, uh, three or more dwelling units or lots, right?
I guess.
Okay, so again, uh, we need a motion, second and discussion. Unless we feel comfortable the six months and with option to extend and then we can discuss it any way you wish, we wish.
Okay, this is Liz Sanford. I'll give it a try.
Thank you, Liz.
I'll tap in, Matt. Um, okay, I make a motion to approve the, uh. Town of Farmington Plan and Zoning Commission's application for amendment to the zoning regulations. To adopt a moratorium on new single-family residential developments with three or. To adopt a moratorium on new single-family residential developments with three or more dwelling units. Or lots in all zones except the AH, HOD, and SROZ. As presented.
Okay. And second?
Scott Hall stood a second.
Thank you, alright, discussion, Mike from Willis.
Same thoughts as the last one.
Alright, six months, okay, um, Scott?
Yeah, I'm used to all six months.
Matt?
Uh, same here, thank you.
Uh, Liz?
I threw it out there as presented, but I also think the six-month plan is a good one.
Alright, and Mike Walsh?
Agreed with the six months.
You know where we're going, we needed the timeframe amended.
Okay, this is Liz Sanford, I'd like to modify my motion to change. Or to make the timeframe as a six-month moratorium with an op- uh, an option to. Uh, add another six months.
Was her second?
Matt Wagner's second.
No, Scott, Scott was the original.
Scott Hall stood a second.
Okay, does everyone know what we're voting on? Alright, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Abstentions, alright, it's unanimous.
Alrighty, here we go, everybody.
Alright, thank you, everyone, alright, planners report.
Oh, yeah, I forgot.
I got that part of the meeting.
Yeah.
I almost forgot, okay, yeah, we've got a quick one, everybody hang tight for me, um. Okay. Alright, this is back to Claudia's, um, and I don't even know if Mike is still on the phone, he probably.
No.
Yeah, I think he, but good for him, he doesn't need to be, this is, this hopefully is very straightforward. So, a- and I can go back to the aerial if I need to, for every, anyone, I'm happy to do so, so this is showing just the outside perimeter. Uh, of Claudia's and uh he's proposing to add a uh exterior walk-in cooler. Uh, six by eight by six, and he has agreed to install a fence. And the fence will be the full six-foot height, full of, for the full depth of the walk-in cooler. Cuz of course, the walk-in coolers are lovely shiny stainless steel. Um, which will look lovely traveling up and down Farmington Avenue, so he's agreed to get a fence uh on it. So with that, it doesn't, i- it doesn't impact parking, it doesn't impact uh anything really other than. It's a site plan change, uh, if everyone is in a agreement, then we'll proceed as shown here. And I'll handle it through the building permit process, if there's any questions or concerns, then. We can bring it back to you as a site plan modification, or I can try to answer any questions if there are any.
Commissioners, are we comfortable with town staff handling this?
Yes.
I I just have one quick question, this is at the back of the building.
Yes, yes, okay. Yep, so this is, this is at that back corner, so really, you're only gonna see it as you're heading westbound on Farmington Avenue. So, uh, this is, yeah, the driving, driving range is up here in the parking lot in Farmington Avenue is at the bottom of the screen. Yes.
Okay, I have no problem with staff handling.
Okay, go for it, Shannon.
Okay.
That's it?
That's all I had under planners report.
Alright, before I let you go, we need to approve the minutes from December, please.
Shannon, Michael, it's just a quick question on the planners report. Um, could you just give a quick update on all those um multifamily uh developments?
Oh, sure, that we're in, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
No, that's okay, this is gonna be, we can, I've, I can do it almost in my sleep, so.
Yeah.
Um, nineteen nineteen Perry Street, uh, there is a new developer in play. The bank got a developer out of Pennsylvania involved, he's currently working through. Permitting with DEP for the environmental controls that are needed. For the contamination that's on site and dealing with that, there's a public comment period that just ended. And in December, the response to the public comments just came out to everyone. Uh, and back to deep, uh, along with some revised documentation, I imagine deep is gonna take them another thirty or sixty days for their review. And then we'll see where it uh it goes from there, so it's got some, it has more traction than it has. Pretty much in my entire tenure here, uh, but there still are a few things to work out through that. Four oh two Farmington Avenue, uh, Metro Realty Development behind uh the Genome Facility. Is still in litigation, uh, it's uh still in the wetlands litigation. And they placed the TPZ litigation on hold pending a result and outcome of the wetlands litigation. So they are not moving concurrently, they are moving sequentially, and uh. We don't have a current uh updated hearing date for this with the courts. Thirteen seventy-one Farmington Avenue, the midpoint development down at the McCallum Building and where the Midas is. Uh, Abe Code and Jeff Scott's development is currently working through permitting with the DOT. Uh, for their OSTA certificate, they had hoped to do an administrative decision with OSTA. Due to the size and nature of the development, the OSTA came back and wanted a full, um, a full certificate. Uh, permitting with them, so it's just a longer uh multi-step process that takes place with OSTA. They are moving through that process. Fifteen Farm Springs uh is the redevelopment of Marriott. And that is continuing, they have building permits in place, they have been. Uh, if you'll recall, there was an A, B, and C, A, B, C, and D wing, D was the um. The ballrooms and kind of common area space, and then E was the standalone building. My understanding is the units in the A wing are almost complete. Um, and so there's a few nuances, obviously, they need to work through with building official and fire marshal before they can open up one wing. If the other wings are still gonna be under construction. We do have a provision that only uh sixty, it's sixty or sixty-five percent of the COs for the units. Can be issued prior to all the public amenity space being in place and up and running. So they could do the A and B wing and probably somewhere in the C wing, I'd have to put a stop to it if we didn't have the public amenity space. Seventy-four Batterston Park, um, that's the housing unit with the two existing office buildings. There, it's been pretty quiet, um, we've had inquiries, our our loose understanding, um. Is that perhaps the owner is looking to sell it to someone to develop that housing portion. Um, obviously, it would still have to adhere to all of the requirements that go with it from a. Uh, special innovation zone, um, so that the continuity with the office units remains. Uh, but there's been no further action on that one to my knowledge. And the eighty South Road sixty-two units, I believe Mr. Sager has to have his application into CHIFA. Uh, I think by the end of January or and or early February, so uh it is pending the funding. Uh, that Mr. Sager is is securing.
Thank you.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, that was very helpful, so it looks like the area, it's probably the first one that will probably go live.
From a traction standpoint, yeah, they they all have uh.
Yeah.
Stuff, it's not easy, right? If it was easy, everybody would do it, so.
Good chance, did they stop building at four oh two?
Um, I believe.
They had started, right?
So I believe they are still processing some rock on site. Uh, but they have not gone vertical, so they, they finished the blasting. They've done retaining walls, the storm drainage is in, I don't believe any of the other utilities are in at this point in time. And I believe the intent is to go into a holding pattern. So. Okay.
We're good for Shannon, yeah.
Anything else?
Alright, so uh motion in a second on our minutes again.
Yeah, Patrick Carrier, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the December twelfth, two thousand twenty-two Town Plan and Zoning Commission meeting.
In a second?
Liz Sanford, I second.
All in favor?
I.
Opposed, abstentions, woo-hoo, and Patrick, thanks for joining us again. I I got so excited, but uh thank you, awesome job, everyone, um, happy twenty twenty-three, it's ten o'clock, we are adjourned.